Okay. Um, Valium? Okay, it's nine o'clock. Let's go ahead and call this special meeting to order. Let's get the flag salute by Peter Hernandez. Are you with us by Zoom, Peter, or is that Colin? Colin today. Peter's tomorrow. My bad. Okay, Colin. How's Vicki?
Ready? I'm there. I'm here, B.
Oh, thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
So, Madam Clerk, can we get the certificate of posting?
I'll make a motion. We approve that.
Second.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Four zero? There's feedback on the line somehow, some way. So, for item C, this morning at 9:00 a.m., we were having the budget hearing. The budget hearing began this morning, and it will continue until, it'll be continuous until it completed. Items not completed on Monday, today, June 21st, will resume on Wednesday, the 23rd, and continue daily at 9:00 a.m. until completed. Okay, so, CIO Espinoza, can you go ahead and?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the board for making themselves available today, as well as staff and the public. Today, I just wanted to first give you kind of a quick brief. This is new for some of you, so I thought it'd be good to kind of review some housekeeping on this. On your budget agenda, you'll notice budget hearing schedule, and A, B, and C have been covered. I'm going to be working through D here in a few minutes. Then we're going to have our county budget analyst actually go ahead and do a budget introduction and do a presentation with regards to the hearing itself, and then request your board to move forward and commence with the hearing itself. The consent agenda items will be heard, just like a regular board meeting. So, if your board so chooses to pull any consent, we will hear those items. As well as the regular agenda items, we will then have your board defer this back to us, back to staff, and staff will go ahead and cover those particular items, starting off on 101. Items 109 through 145, we'll be requesting your board to hear those items all at once. There's just a slight change, but we wanted to present to you anything that has been changed in the budgets to be on regular agenda. So, more or less, what you see from basically 1 to 100 is status quo from this last year. There has really been no changes. But the other items have been discussed. Your board has shared some input and some requests and some changes during our special meetings, as well as dialogue with your board. So, those items are on regular agenda, so we can highlight those changes. However, and our budget analysts will highlight a little bit more, the percentage change with regards to items 109 through 145, but there is a state mandate that requires a, having a reserve within the units itself. So, that's what we did. That's what's a little bit unique, a little bit different. So, that's, that's why it's on regular agenda. At that point, we will then continue on hearing 546, and then bring it back to your board for a budget deliberation. So, at that point, your board will have the opportunity to share your thoughts with the budget, make some highlights with maybe some things that you want to make sure you see happen this year with it, that's within the budget, and then ask, or staff will then ask for you to move forward with staff recommendations. So, with that, we'll go ahead and get into this. I will just highlight a few things. I don't know if any of you had a chance or to look at the actual letter, and maybe you could pull that up, Gabriel? The actual CIO's letter, it's about four pages long, and highlights some of the things that we've encountered over this last year, which has been a doozy of a year, I would have to say. There's been a lot going on. And it's definitely the COVID and what has transpired in our local community, obviously, has impacted the entire world. And there's been definitely some issues that have come up, and really triggering events that have triggered financial issues. There has been a tremendous impact on, in the business community within our local area, and so on and so forth. So, with that, I want to just first thank staff for a tremendous job this last year. All departments have just stepped up to the plate and adhered to COVID, adhered to some of the things that we've had to address, but also to, they've just been on point, especially addressing the safety of the residents within our community. So, I have to just first outline that. On the second paragraph, I did want to highlight, there's a sentence there, "This particular fiscal year's budget is a year of recovery and resilience." And really, that's what this is about. It's, like I said, it's status quo. We're still, there's still some uncertainties. We haven't seen FEMA money yet. We haven't seen some things that we're looking for. And just trying to gauge how things pan out. Obviously, there's, since, you know, this is last week, things have changed. It's kind of more business as usual for the community. And we will soon be having these masks off in the chambers, hopefully this week. HR staff is working on that policy. So, we may not have to wear them tomorrow, but we have to put that out for the entire county. So, at this point in time, staff has to wear these masks, and then, and then we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. We'll announce that out, and there'll be some emails that'll be sent out as well.
May I ask a question regarding that?
Sure.
I know there's been an ongoing issue regarding Cal OSHA and the mandate from Cal OSHA, and I understand that there's a significant fine to the county and county employee, well, county management. Should we violate that? Has that been rectified? And do you think that we will have that information?
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're working on. We're making sure that we're in alignment with that, and that's, that's really it. And also, too, making sure the attestation forms and attestation is done properly. So, we have to follow the rules.
Right.
And that's what we're verifying and checking. If, for some odd reason, we cannot get that dealt with today, then we'll have to wear masks tomorrow at our board meeting. But most likely, I would say, at pretty much 100%, in July, we won't have to wear masks at the next board meeting.
That's good to know. Thank you.
And as you see on page two, key accomplishments from last year's budget. Again, it's, it's, it's the best kind of outline, and that's what this budget's about for this year. But last year, we did a similar thing. We met, we created a budget, and we did some really great things this last year. I just have to highlight that, you know, one of the things that we worked on, the pass board, wanted a compensation study, so we worked on that diligently. We were able to do that. There was also, you know, some great things that we did. We did a digital interactive budget, which is amazing, that we won an award through CSAC for that, which was great for our county. And I think all departments can attest to this. It's just much easier to do the budget, because the budget can now roll over. You can make edits and tweaks, and it just makes it a lot easier and a lot more user-friendly to the public as well. A lot more transparent, especially for CSAs with regards to their budget. So, it's been a tremendous feat, and want to thank staff for all the hard work that went into making that actually happen. This last week was a special week. We actually had a ribbon cutting. Want to thank the board members for their attendance, the actual jail. We have our sheriff soon to be here, and it was just a really great, you know, great to see that happen, but I can tell you, there was a lot of work that went into that, a lot of planning. We have an auditor here. There was countless meetings that we've had with him on making this happen, as well as the sheriff's staff, and countless meetings that actually occurred behind the scenes, going to SMP, Standard and Poor's, to San Francisco, and really doing our best to sell our county and to sell our budget and to sell kind of what we're doing here. And we got a great rate. We got rated triple, double A, which is really great for a small county. And we did really well, I felt. And so, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes things. There was a tremendous amount of work that actually occurred at the jail. Key staff there that actually made sure that the jail actually happened. We had some great partners, Vanner and other folks, that actually worked on the project and did a really great job. So, very, very thankful for that, and a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of planning, and also tremendous amount of budgeting. See, there was, there was a lot of money that actually went into that, but we made it happen. We made it work, and we worked with Sheriff's Organization, probation, the CCP, on actually looking at subsidizing the COP based on AB 109 funds, which we were able to do. So, those are some really good things, a collaborative effort to make it happen. And there's a lot of things that went behind the scenes to make it happen. So, I want to thank staff for that, as well as just the same week, we had a ribbon cutting for the behavioral health building. Almost exact same thing happened. Staff had to go to San Francisco. They had to actually meet with SMP again. We got raided again, and we got a 2.47 rate on that. It's a tremendous saving. We actually saved our residents a lot of money, brought that rate down. And it's almost, I would say, free money. It's not, but it's, it's, it's really a great feat, again, that occurred. So, those are just a few highlights. Again, I know staff and Health and Human Services is working on a, on the Phase Three. We'll be having a ribbon cutting in July as well, so mark your calendars for that. I think that's going to be a great event. And it just shows some of the work that's been occurring in the development of the budgets and making sure that it actually happens. And just want to really highlight the efforts that have gone into, into making some of these things happen. So, with that, I just wanted to share, in general, this is a status quo budget, but we have a lot of things on the horizon. We're working on roads. We're, we have a really good budget through the CIP programs. I want to thank RMA for all the work that they've done on developing programming for that and budgeting. And there's just a tremendous amount of things that we're going to be addressing, homelessness. We have the American Rescue Act funding within this budget, potentially developing a wastewater treatment plant, addressing our roads, addressing homelessness, as well as broadband. So, there's quite a few things that we're looking forward over this next year, and that is outlined in this budget. So, with that, I'd like to go ahead and pass this to our budget analyst, Gabriel. And Gabriel, go ahead and move on with his part of this presentation.
Thanks for catching that. Thank you. Good morning, Board, Chair of the Board. Good morning, CIO Espinoza. Good morning, County staff and members of the public. Thank you for coming out and being part of the budget process. Now, moving into the budget hearings for fiscal year '21, '22. CIO Espinoza mentioned, we're looking at implementing more or less a status quo budget with very strategic investments in key areas with funding either that we're receiving from the federal in the form of the American Rescue Act, as Ray Espinoza mentioned, CIO. Funding going towards key areas, whether that be homelessness or wastewater, or some other areas and forms of expenditure which are allowed within the confines of the funding that we're receiving, and also leveraging other funding available, whether it's for our subvention funds or our general fund, making sure that we're addressing key areas and infrastructure in our community and our county buildings to make sure that they're up to code, and we can continue to move that forward. So, the first one, just going to do a little bit of light housekeeping. So, as I meant, as CIO Espinoza mentioned, one of our greatest accomplishments that we had was, we received an award because we were the first counties to implement the fully online budget system, and it's already, it's been public for more than 10 days. And for those that are watching this via Zoom, if you want to kind of follow us in track and, you know, look look at the budget and be able to kind of add some more information, if you go to our county website, if you go to our county website, if you look under the government tab, Budget and Finance, you'll come up to this window. There'll be dropdowns for all the fiscal years that we've had budgets. The budget that we're going to be looking at this year is our 21, 22 recommended budget. Following the recommended budget in August, I will be coming back to the board in a regular board meeting, whether it be the, whether it be the 10th or the 24th with the adopted budget. And that one will encompass more information. It will have the full schedules according to the county, the county budget guide that the state provides us. That one is one where the, both the CIO's office and the auditor's office will work in collaboration to make sure that we can put together some of these documents to bring to the board. If there are no large changes or something that needs to be addressed and brought up to the board, the item will more than likely appear under the consent agenda. If there are items which we do need to address, it would appear in a regular agenda, and we will bring those items to the board to make sure that you guys are aware of the items or the changes that we're making on the adopted item. Jumping back to the presentation. So now speaking a little bit more broadly about the budget. This year's budget for the total county is $182.1 million. It's a decrease from last year's adopted budget. The primary results of these are various projects within the county that are being completed, both within subvention funding and general fund, whether it be roads and bridges that are getting constructed and completed. Or for example, as CEO Espinoza mentioned, the completion of the jail expansion and the behavioral health building with subvention funds, and then continual expansion with the transitional housing projects within HHSA. In regards to staffing levels, we're going to be increasing staffing levels by 23 F, full-time FTEs. Net increase of 13 within subvention funding, primarily going with Health Human Services and Behavioral Health Department. And then also, we're increasing our general fund of full-time FTEs by 10. Primary, primary staff going towards public safety in our roads. So for example, our sheriff's office is picking up one sheriff's deputy being funded through AB 109. So again, going back to trying to leverage as much of the funding that's out there and available for us to move forward and make sure that we're using all of our resources to the best of their capabilities.
Excuse me, Gabriel, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So when you're saying the increased staffing levels, 23 FTEs. I know that we are, or we have been at a very high vacancy rate in terms of relative to FTEs that are budgeted. So are you saying that we are bumping up on top of what our current FTEs are even further? Or are you saying that we are looking to fill those open?
Yeah.
You follow what I'm asking? Just want to be clear.
Yes. I can provide some clarification for that.
Okay, thank you.
So, in, to address your question, we're increasing our staffing levels in areas where there have been either, the positions have been fully staffed and they, they just need more help, whether it be, let's say, our roads. Where there's been real concern about needing and having enough staff out there to, you know, make sure that our county roads are supported. So that's an area where we're seeing we need to increase. So we're seeing an increase there. And say, for example, also with our sheriffs, we also see that there's a need there. And with AB 109, they're creating a gang intelligence unit with a combination of probation, our IT department and our sheriff's department. So those are all positions being funded by AB 109. We're seeing an increase based off of project that's being taken place. As you mentioned, there are vacancies throughout different departments, and that's something that in this upcoming year, we're looking to address to make sure that we tighten up. What we're going to be doing and looking at is looking at our, every single department in the county and seeing what they look like to see what their vacancies have been. Let's say if they've had a position for various amount of years and it's just been sitting vacant, 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 then it's going to be something that we're going to discuss with them, seeing is this going to be a position that's going to be constantly vacant for the long period of time, which goes back to why our vacancy rate is so high? Or let's say if there's a different factor at play, whether it be wages that aren't reflected of what the work is based off of, based off of other counties and, and pretty much it being that staff kind of come here, train, and then particularly move on to a different county, higher wages or more flexibility or something like that. Making sure that we're addressing those with our HR department here in the CIO's office to make sure that we, you know, take care of that.
Okay, and you kind of answered my, you did answer my question, but just a follow-up. So, and I understand, I totally agree, areas like roads are critical. But given the fact that we have 20% roughly vacancy, which is obviously really high.
Right.
And we already talked about tightening things up, you know, they're not maybe real numbers in certain departments. So, but what I'm hearing is, is in this budget that we're looking at today, we have not really tightened up yet. We're going to be looking at that over this next fiscal year. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, if I may. So, yeah, so just to answer your question, this year, I want to kind of put timing and kind of perspective. We just hired Gabriel. He came in from the behavioral health. And we weren't really sure if we were going to be able to present this budget today. And Gabriel's done a fantastic job getting things together. But we didn't, you know, and still with COVID and other things, there is still some uncertainty. So what we wanted to do is keep it a status quo for the most part. But this next year, that is one of Gabriel's list of duties that he's going to have to work on is addressing the vacancies. We have to address the vacancy and working with HR on that. So this next year, that's going to be something we're going to work on, and, and that will be more or less off the books, so to speak.
Okay, so we should know going that there's probably some tightening.
Yeah, and what we'll do is we'll be presenting to your board over this next year during special meetings. We may even have special meetings in advance of the new year, possibly, depending on, on how things look. But we will sit down with you, sit down with the departments and really go through and fine tune that. Because that has been a concern from administration.
Right.
Is having these vacancies and, and departments still asking for more employees at times. Again, there's special one-offs and there's, you know, there's some, there's some reasons why, and that's what, a lot of this is validated with that moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Yeah, so I just, so the public, so it's clear to the public, we're not just adding 13 positions. I mean, on paper right now, it's a net of 13 additional positions, but for me at least, you know, I'd like to see us clean up the vacancies and just so the public is aware, we're looking at eliminating positions.
That's correct.
And so the 13 is really not, you know, I'd like to eliminate probably at least 13 positions if, if we're trying to have, you know, some balance here, if that's at all possible. Not, I don't, not talking about layoffs or anything like that, but just those positions that have been.
Yeah, the vacancies, yeah. So I hear what you're saying. So those positions that have been vacant, we're just going to go ahead and basically take those off the books. They're no longer going to be funded.
Right.
And that's the plan. So we'll take those off the books. So the FTE count will ultimately drop. And it will have to drop, to be quite honest with you, because that's how we're budgeting, that's how we're filling the gap. That's how we're filling our budget at this point. But it's, it's, it's not very clear. And that's, that's the issues that we're running across. As, as, as things go forward, costs are increasing, it's becoming more evident, we have to be a lot more clear. And we did it originally to allow departments to have the flexibility to hire, because there's been this, you know, someone would leave and it would take six, eight months to hire somebody at times, right? And so another office may need it. So instead of, it just allowed more flexibility throughout the county to be able to hire folks. That's really what it was, you know, created for, so.
Well, thank you, Gabriel. Give a moment. Thank you, Ray. That was my understanding also. And then also too, we need to realize that we have a fiscal responsibility to pass the budget and ready, and have it ready to go for the new fiscal year. And so there will be some special meetings coming in the future and address any of the concerns that the supervisors have. Supervisor Hernandez, did you have any concerns before we go further, since all three of us chimed in up here? Going, going, gone. Okay, Gabriel, continue.
Yes, so as Ray Espinoza mentioned, this is all something that we're looking to address by going forward, making sure that we're covering our bases and definitely bringing back more items to the board. So want to give a snapshot of what we're looking at as a county. I know the numbers may seem a little bit daunting, a big negative number. So the reason, the biggest reason that it shows on here is that one of the areas, also like mentioned, kind of adding projects to my to-do list. Our current open-gup system doesn't incorporate our fund balance. Our fund balance is key because we try to leverage all funding that's available. Within the recommended budget, it doesn't include that piece. In the adopted budget that I'm going to be bringing to the board in August, that one will encompass the fund balance as it's completed. The one reason that I don't want to include it right now is that since we're still in the current year, there's a lot of expenses that haven't settled. As we approach the end of the year in June 30th, a lot of those expenses are going to be settling and truing out. There's going to be a lot of transfers going in and out of the different departments as costs are being reimbursed. So a lot of different changes are going to be taking place. And hopefully by the time that I can bring the adopted budget, I'm going to be showing you guys a more true sense of where we stand in time, what percentage of fund balance we're going to be using at a different departments, and how we're moving forward. One area that I did want to highlight is that on the 21, 22 budget, we're actually seeing a decrease from the previous year. The main reasons is there's a lot of completion of various projects throughout the county, whether it be facilities, roads or bridges. For example, in our RMA department, there was a completion of 10 roads and bridges throughout the county. Within Capital Tech, obviously, we had the new behavioral health building and the expansion of the jail. So there's a lot of these different areas. And then the biggest component of where you're still seeing a lot of these higher numbers, as Ray mentioned, is our vacancy, vacancy budgeting. And that's something that we're looking to address going forward, making sure we're taking a hold of it. Want to give a good, a quick snapshot of what we're looking like funding-wise, as we can see our biggest areas of expenditure that we're putting towards is our Public Works Department. Making sure that we're putting funding out there for roads, bridges, and capital facilities and improving our community. Our Health Human Services, also making sure that we're addressing our social services side of it, and making sure that we're, we're having these resources available for the community, making sure that we're addressing them.
Gabriel, excuse me, could you back up one slide?
Sure.
And I, I'll try not to interrupt so much going forward, but I'm just trying to get a bigger picture here. So when we look at this, two questions come to mind. So first of all, with the revenues, the recommended budget is actually down slightly from, from last year recommended budget. And so what you're saying is, in spite of the fact that we have these 13 additional positions that we're looking to fill because of the, the elimination of the capital projects that are now done, that's the primary reason why we're actually seeing a bit of a decrease here, because everything else is status quo, but that we've added 13 positions.
Right.
So I'm just trying to make sure I fully understand why that has happened. And then my second question is, and I think you've, you've addressed this, but showing a deficit of $24 million currently under this, from a, from an overall standpoint, because of funds that we have, as well as I know that there's monies that come in from the state or federal government, it's a bit misleading. Obviously, if I, my previous business, if I had that kind of a deficit going in, I would be very, very worried. So I just wanted to make sure for my edification, but also for the public, you fully explain that. Thank you.
Let me just share a couple of things and I'll, I'll pass it back to Gabriel. I, you know, I feel the same way when I read this. This is really kind of an inaccurate present, I mean, it doesn't include the, the actual reserves because you got to reconsider, there's, there's Health Human Services, there's, as an example, they just built this building, right? So they had reserves that they used to put, to put into that. But that doesn't, that, that actual presentation or spreadsheet doesn't account for that. And there's many other things as well that where we just talked about vacancies, American Rescue Act fund. There's a lot of things in there that aren't accounted for. So, so we're definitely, I think what Gabriel was trying to share with you on the first couple of slides, it was something similar. There's, you know, we're definitely using some reserves, which we have been for, you know, roads as an example, for the potholes. The last two years, we used a couple of million dollars. So there are reserves that we have been using for the one-time projects and other things. But that number is obviously a really big one. I, you know, I talked to Gabriel in advance about that. He needs to have answers for you. And obviously, that's what those bullets are there for, to highlight that. And also too, in the actual schedules, because this is, we're mainly going through today is Schedule Nine of about, I think it's 15 schedules. So there's, in those schedules, they actually account for the reserves, and it gives you a much more truer number. It's a lot more tighter. So, and, and right now, we're tracking pretty much on budget right now from last year, which we had an offset as well, a deficit, a pretty large deficit too. But that was part of it, was vacancies and other things. But anyways, just, I'll pass it to Gabriel.
Then that's, that's something that I'm also going to highlight, including in the general fund, as Ray mentioned. There's a lot of one-time funding that we received. That's why you're seeing a drop in revenues. There's also a lot of projects that are being completed with funding that was already existing within the fund balance that was received in previous years. So the money has been there. In some cases, we've just been receiving in some areas a little bit less, or we're showing more accurate numbers because we're not receiving that one-time funding. So that's why it shows as a, as a decrease. A decrease on the revenues and then on the expenses, it's also showing it because, like I mentioned, there's, there's projects that are being completed. One thing like, like you guys have been mentioning, it has, it has been shown that because of this vacancy budgeting, this number does look a lot, this does look inflated. If, let's say we were to do away with a lot, a lot of the vacancy budgeting that's happening, instead of it being a $24 million deficit, we might be looking something closer to maybe, I don't know, between 3 and 5 million. And that could be what we're looking at, either to leverage other funding, either coming in through the state via grants, or maybe funding available through the federal government, in order to leverage these funds, these funds in order to make sure that we're, we can come up with that gap. Or, you know, bringing it back to the board and making sure that we're putting something together through economic development, whether we're looking at implementing new, new sources of revenue streams. You know, for example, this year, we're looking at cannabis and all these other areas to come up with areas where we can have some sort of funding streams available to continue to move forward. Because at the end of the day, if you're running something like this over the long term, it's not clearly sustainable. So we're making sure that we're addressing all those concerns.
One thing to add, the one last comment to add, is that when we initiated that, we had to keep a close eye on the vacancy because it is a big number. It offsets the bottom line. So what we did is we did quarterly reports, and we presented it to the board every year, and we shared with, what the vacancies was. And then I, you know, we addressed that through some sort of journal entry or, or some other facet of how we address the funding. So, so I just wanted to make sure that that, that was, well, obviously, we had a transition this last year with Gabriel coming in. So it was a little bit tough to kind of provide a report to you. But our ultimate goal is to just address this. Just makes it a lot easier, cleaner.
Thank you.
So we're going to be moving on a little bit now. I'm going to give a general fund overview of what we're looking like this upcoming year. In the general fund, our approximate revenues are going to be 69.3 million, represented with an increase of 6.2 million from the previous year. The reason that it's showing an increase is because we're being, we're going to be in receipt of the American Recovery Plan funding. We're receiving $6 million this year. We've actually already received them. We're going to be receiving another 6 million in the upcoming year. That's why, one of the reasons that you're seeing expenditures which are higher than the previous years is we're going to be accounting for various projects that we're looking to provide and implement within the community. As CEO Espinoza mentioned, looking at our wastewater treatment plant or addressing homelessness issues, whether that be, you know, expanding our homeless shelter or building some more housing, making sure that we're addressing a lot of these issues that we can definitely put some of this American Rescue funding towards, making sure that we're building it and pulling it together. Just as there were increases, there was also some, some decreases within it. There were some decreases due to the completion of the jail, some other projects within the county, which the general fund was subsidizing. So it's showing kind of like. Um, so it's showing kind of like up and down fluctuations. We're also seeing a slight increase in our revenues. Um, the primary reason for that is increasing due to our property tax. Right now the housing market has been doing very well. So, um, just as long with that, our property taxes go along with it. Um, some of our other, uh, tax, you know, revenues and streams that have been coming in, have been coming in pretty strong. Uh, compared to where we thought we were going to be last year, they've been doing fairly well. Um, we thought we were going to be tracking a little bit of, um, more of a hazardous, um, um, more dangerous seed with, with, with this funding as it was coming in. Just like on the state side, they were kind of, you know, looking at some darker clouds on the horizon. But at the end of the day, they ended up with a really huge, uh, uh, sales tax surplus. Um, so on our side, we are, we weren't hit as hard either. Uh, we're also seeing some, you know, rejuvenation and return of revenues as it kind of goes forward. And now I'm going to kind of highlight that graph, but more of in the table format. Um, seeing kind of the expenditures within the general fund. One of the areas that I wanted to touch on was the county administrative office. It seems really inflated. The reason that it shows like that is because it does account for the American Rescue funding that we receive. That comes within the county administrative office. And with that, we kind of delegated to a specific purpose. So let's say for example, we want, um, we're going to put money towards this wastewater treatment facility. It'll show us in, it'll, it shows as revenue coming in on the administrative office. It's then going to show as an expense, whether it's through a capital project. Um, and it'll show as a transfer going up. But the money right now is held within the county administrative office. It, it also holds various other departments within the county or IT, HR, internal services, um, our at, very own admin office and various other departments within it. Um, and with that.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and take this, this part Gabriel. So thank you Gabriel for working on that, uh, just a brief, uh, over, overview. Um, our, our staff will like to go ahead and hand this back to you, Madam Chair, uh, to commence with F as well as, um, moving forward with approving temporary do-pass on the items. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So then that will take us to the portion where we will commence the budget hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and, oops, I didn't hit it hard enough. Commence the budget hearings at 9:38 AM on June the 21st. And so that takes us to the consent items. So does the board wish to pull any of the consent items? Um, and while you're thinking about that, members of the public, if you are interested in commenting on one or more of the consent items, you may do so at this time. While the supervisor reviewing it, we will hear the public's concerns. If you are speaking to one item on the consent, you will have three minutes. If you are speaking to more than one item, you will have five minutes and we will promptly disconnect at the three minute and the five minute mark. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen.
We will then go to members in the chambers after we hear from the Zoom comments. Okay?
No comments on Zoom.
Members of the chamber, anybody want to make a public comment? No? Okay. So I'm taking back to the board members. Do you wish to pull any of the consent items that are items one through 100, um, on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, 33, 45.
Okay, hold on. 33?
Some of these just are going to be quick questions.
45, okay.
Uh, 55.
Uh, 55?
65.
65?
And then, um, 220, Fund 224, I don't know what number that is. It's, I just had a quick question on, it's public health, basically.
Okay. Is that the one through 100 items?
Let me go back and look.
This is just one through 100 of the consent right now.
Yeah, go ahead.
On page nine of the agenda, we start the regular. So anything prior to that?
No, it's not, um, hold on one second. Sorry.
It's okay.
I didn't have a number attached to it.
Hey, I'm having one of those days.
83. Um, I'll just say, yeah, just say 83.
83?
Yeah.
83. Okay. So let me confirm before I go over to Supervisor Tiffany. You have 83, I'm going backwards, 83, 65, 55, 45, 33, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Tiffany, do you have any items that you want, would like to pull, one through 100 right now?
Um, Supervisor Cosmiki covered a couple and I don't have any additional. Thank you.
Awesome. Supervisor Hernandez, were there any items from the consent item that you'd like to pull?
None, Madam Chair.
On that note, can I get a motion to approve a temporary use pass on all the consent items except for items number 33, 45, 55, 65 and 83?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
We have a four zero, so the first order business will be the first item. So Supervisor Cosmiki, item number 33 in county council, what were your concerns there?
Um, my primary concern here is the, and I've, I've, I've talked about this in the past. This is the county council's office budget. Um, my primary concern is the, the $700,000 in outside legal costs. And, um, I, I know some of these things, we don't have a choice, you know, but I think as, like my comment on it, I guess, is as a county board and as a county council's office, I really would like, um, to have at least a goal of, you know, gradually reducing that number and not increasing that number. I think that's an alarming number. Um, again, I, I fully understand somebody sues the county and, and we have to defend ourselves. But we have some litigation that just goes on and on and on. You know, there's, there's countless examples through the years before we were on the board. Um, you know, I think that, I don't even have to name them because there's some of them that were just, you know, very, very years and years and years. Anyhow, it's just a comment. I would like to have that be a goal of ours is to really, um, you know, we have a staff of county councils, we have attorneys, we have faith in these attorneys. But that, you know, half of the, half of the, um, I think our, our payroll cost is like 800,000 and then 700, an additional 700,000 for outside legal. And that, to me, that, that needs to, that needs to change. Thank you.
Okay. I, I respect your concern about that because 700,000 is a significant amount of money. But someone coming with, from a legal background and understanding, there are some tasks that our in-house counsel can fully take care of. And there's some that, that, that they cannot or should not because of possible conflict of interest or anything like that. So I do know full well, have full faith in, in the county council's office, that anything that is contracted out, they're doing so because that is the last choice. Correct?
Right. And I, I do watch that carefully. I just finished, um, we were working on a year-to-year basis to try to compare where our outside legal count, costs have been over the last, uh, approximately seven, eight years. That is a, an important thing that we do watch to try to make sure that we can reduce that when possible. So I will make sure that we keep that as low as possible. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Follow-up question, Barbara. Um, how do you make that decision? And I saw, I, I read where your goal is to try to, uh, do more in-house. Um, and yet I know we have some that, um, some new ones and, and potentially that we're looking outside. So are you looking at, obviously, I mean, at, at some point you possibly make a decision that you need to add another attorney, maybe it's just workload. Also part of it may be expertise and you're looking for someone that has more litigation experience. Or in the case, I know with landfill, for example, we use the, a landfill expert. So those things I understand, but I just maybe go a little bit more detail. How you make that decision? Because as we're trying to move more in-house, which I, I agree with Supervisor Cosmiki makes sense. You know, the, the, how you move toward that direction has to do with manpower, has to do with a number of things. So I'm just curious your thinking there.
Um, currently our office isn't, uh, most of the litigation we do is a specific type. Normally it's the RITS. Um, we don't carry a lot of the litigation, that's civil litigation in-house. Um, we're currently not established that. Um, and I'm happy to talk to the board more about that. In Plumas County, I was responsible for bringing all the litigation in-house by hiring a litigator. And there's pros and cons to doing that. It did result in, um, a vast reduction in expenses. But I will say that there's a negative implication in my experience there with being able to hire the same type of litigation, uh, experience at the county's salary schedule as that you would get from outside counsel. And in that county, it was a mountainous county. So we were able to attract, um, a very qualified litigator that was interested in living in the mountains. But with our normal salary scale, there's an issue with hiring the best litigators at our salary scale. And also there's a detriment when you change in-house, um, staff. Sometimes they do change and then you'll be changing, you know, you have some turnover and it's, there's pros and cons with bringing litigation in-house. Plus, uh, our internal staffing right now isn't fully staffed up for full, full litigation. So we take limited litigation on. So we've been doing a lot of the RITS. And, uh, we do arbitrations, we do the pitches, well, they're not litigation matters, but we do other minor civil actions, motion work in our office. But a lot of the full litigation, civil litigation matters in, in, um, in civil and, and California and federal court, we, we contract out. And I'm happy to talk to the board about the pros and cons about doing more of that in-house.
And then just, uh, a, a general question. And I, maybe with your experience in, in other counties, you can answer this. You know, it does seem, as Supervisor Cosmiki said, it seems like in some cases, there's been, you know, ongoing cases or a lot of litigation. How do we compare with other counties? Obviously we're a small county in terms of litigation. I mean, are we, and is in general, is the litigation downward trending? Um, and sometimes, you know, there's clearly, there's trade-offs. Uh, settling, settling early and just moving on is obviously often a better choice than trying to fight it. But then yours trade-offs, I understand precedents. I'm just curious, general comments about that. Thank you.
Um, and over, overall, um, and I will, um, get verification from Trindell to verify it. I believe that we've had a very good, um, uh, history with cases, uh, civil liability cases. Um, regarding, uh, we've been very fortunate that we haven't had, um, high dollar amount in the civil liability, um, that's being handled by Trindell. Some of our most expensive cases were, um, matters that the board in the past felt it was important to, uh, to, uh, proceed forward with. And, uh, so some of those weren't, they were more, um, on, I guess on principle rather than just straight economics. But I think that it is important to try to resolve some matters sooner rather than, um, proceeding, you know, long, long-term. So I know that the Skagliotti case, for example, has gone on for a long period of time and that's just finally wrapping up. And it's been ongoing since I, since I joined the, the county back in 2008. It was proceeding before that. So I mean, I think that it, the board, yes.
And I, and I know it's a, like you said, case by case, but hopefully, um, your department, um, in conjunction with board supervisors, looks backwards and evaluates cases and says, you know, in retrospect, maybe we should have settled this. Um, obviously 2020 is great hindsight, but, um, maybe that would be helpful for us to, going forward, to be making decisions reflecting on some of the decisions that were made in the past. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay. So then we're going to go ahead and take these items one at a time. So since item 33 was pulled, can I get a, um, what's the wish of the board from item 30?
Madam Chair, if I may, can you, um, ask if there's any public comment?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Are there any public comments for item 33, county council?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments on Zoom.
Okay. All right. So then what is the wish of the board for item number 33, county council, 25?
I'll move to approve item number 33.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Four zero. The next item will be item number 45, probation, the juvenile detention facility. Um, the, the facility itself or just general?
Maybe I got the wrong, maybe the numbers changed from when I looked at it. I, I was looking at the DA's office.
Oh, oh, so that would be 42 or 43. Those have already been passed. So technical, technical question here?
Yeah, it's just a comment.
Hold on. I, I, so you have me in a quandary here. So since we have officially passed them, can we have this conversation later or now?
And if I may, Madam Chair?
I'm trying to get, I'm just trying to get clarity first, because.
He can talk, he can talk to it.
I just wanted to point out that the budget, it was confusing because it says 45 next to district attorney and then it says 42, 43 under it. I just, I, I, I just, I should have said district attorney, but it does say 45.
It's a narration of one through 100. Okay. Okay. I see.
Yeah. So just for clarity purposes, those are, those are like budget units. So that, that, yeah.
Should have said department and maybe, yeah.
Yeah. So, but it's fine. I think in regards to that, we could still, um, if you guys want to go ahead and move forward with item 45, just go ahead for, um, for approval.
It's more of a question I had on it. Honestly, I don't, I, it's not that I'm looking at not approving it. It's just that the costs, I see the costs, uh, just over the la, and we're new to the board. So, you know, this is maybe an ignorance thing, but the costs have gone from 1.67 million in 1819 to 2.26 million. So I'm just wondering, that's a fairly significant jump in three years. And I'm just, was, were there positions that were unfilled? Is that what we're dealing with sort of a thing?
Gabriel.
And you're talking specifically to the juvenile detention facility?
To the DA's office.
Oh, the DA's, okay. All right. My bad.
It's Kadia.
Go ahead, Gabriel.
So, uh, is this the budget you were referring to, the district attorney one, division? Or are you looking at the victim's witness?
Let me, um, pull it up. I apologize. I, I don't know where you said.
That's, I think.
Trying to get my computer to work here.
I believe that's the one, Gabriel.
We have until 2 PM Supervisor Cosmiki, so take your time. But at 2 PM, I have a hard stop and I'm out of here. I've got other obligations, um, that I have to take care of today. Sorry.
Um, okay. Um, so, uh, expenses in 2018, 19 were 1.67. Um, I'm looking at the.
Right. Yes.
DA's office. And, um, you know, then it was 1.88 and then now we're 2.256. So I'm just, just trying to get clarity on why it's going up so much.
So one of the, one of, well, some of the positions that received a higher boost because of the salary compensation. I think some of the positions were in the DA's office. And another reason for it also increasing is that within the CC, the, um, community, uh, partnership, uh, the CCP for the AB 109, um, they're increasing the funding to fund a full, a district, um, a full district attorney position. If you, we look here at the, at the staffing piece. So in fiscal year 2021, they had 13 staff. And now going into, um, this upcoming year, the staffing levels are increasing. Sorry. Mouse is moving. So the staffing is going to be increasing. We're going to be adding one deputy district attorney, uh, funded completely by AB 109. So, and, and since these are district attorneys, um, the salary, you know, by some of these positions is significantly high. Um, so that's where it's, it's, it, just adding or reducing one position, once it's fully loaded with benefits and everything, it definitely garners some impact to the, to the fund as it kind of moves in and out. So that, that's one of the primary reasons for it. Um, and as you kind of see, the, the main one, as we look at the salary line, that, that's, that's the big piece that's moving. And as I mentioned, the reasons for it has been the, um, the class and comp study plus the new position being added.
Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to have the same issue on the, um, these numbers. I'm really sorry. My, the 55 one that, the next one that we're coming to, I actually meant the library on that. So, um, sorry about that.
That's what happens when we're distracted. So I'm glad you're more distracted than me today. Okay. So since we had pulled 45 and there's no issue with 45, can I get a motion then to get that one approved since there's no issue on that?
Also moved.
You have a question?
Yeah, I would just open it up to the public, just go through the formality.
As I said, destruction, destruction, destruction. So are there any comments, whether they're in the chambers or, um, in Zoom land out there for item number 45 in the juvenile detention facility?
Please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments on Zoom.
Okay. All right. So then, now, can I get a motion for number, item number 45?
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Is that you, Peter?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Four zero? So the next item that was pulled was item number 55, which is the Veterans Memorial Park. But I believe you wanted to talk about the county library. Okay, so...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, the numbers are...
It's the headers in them. Welcome to my world, Supervisor Cosmic. Okay, so since we have item 55, Veterans Memorial Park, and since it was officially pulled, do we have any members from the public that would like to speak to that item?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. No comments.
Any comments here in the chambers? Okay, I see none. Let's go ahead and address the item, vote on it. And then, since it was pulled, but yet not really, we'll go back to hear your concerns that would, our Department 55. Okay, so what is the will of the board for item 55 on the consent?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Four zero for item 55. We will now go back to, it's probably item...
Supervisor Cosmic, item 65. Is that the same thing too? Are you looking at RMA? A different number, or is that actually the law enforcement?
Yeah, the housing.
So can we do 65 as well?
Okay, the same thing we just did.
And then we'll go back to the two?
Okay. Well, he has 83. So is 83 the same concern? On page eight, you pulled item number 83, Public Health Administration?
I think that's correct.
That one is correct.
Okay, good, good, good.
That was the last second.
All right, so let's go back then to item number 65 from the consent. Are there any members from the public that would like to speak to item number 65, Law Enforcement Impact Fund?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. No comments.
Okay. Anyone here in the chambers? I see none. What is the will of the board for item number 65 from the consent item?
Move to approve 65.
Second.
Okay.
And just for clarity purposes, just so, just, it's a temporary due pass, just for clarity purposes, on this. It's a little bit unique for budget.
It's unique for us too, all three of us sitting up here, so it's the first time. But it's baptism by fire. So what is the will of the board then, for item 65? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Peter? I hear silence. I'm going to say four zero.
Aye.
Oh, there we go, thank you.
Aye.
So then, before we hit item 83, let's go back and address the concern that you had. You said specifically the library, right?
Yeah, so that would be item 46.
Okay.
I apologize again. Again, it says 55 right next to County Library, and then there's other numbers. I should have clarified that with our CAO beforehand. My, I don't know if it's a concern, but just a question, there's a new position being created, Deputy Librarian. So I'm just wondering what, where that came from, what the need is, and...
Can, can I address that, just simply because I kind of know a little bit? I know you'll, you'll give the numbers and justification. I know Nora Conte, and she's a really good friend of mine, and I've known her for about 15 years or so. But she told me 15 years ago she's going to retire, and she's still here. And so she is pawning for her successor. And so that's what needs to be in the budget to, in order for us to go ahead and move forward. And so that's the rationale. But at one point, Nora Conte will no longer be with us with the library. And so we need to make sure that the county is well taken care of. We need to make sure that the person who will be her successor, successor, has everything that they need to seamlessly move into that role. And Nora, don't you dare leave us until you're ready to go, okay? Gabriel? Do you have any other questions? Sorry, Supervisor Cosmic?
Yeah, I'm wondering what the, I'm wondering what the increase is. And we're creating permanent positions here. So I don't think that rationale necessarily flies, because presumably Nora Conte is going to retire at some point, and then we're still going to have a Deputy Librarian position on the books. So again, do you have a dollar amount for, with the increases? And...
Yeah, well, more or less, I can talk to a lot of it. So one of the rationales for creating the Deputy County Librarian is part of, for succession planning, to make sure we had something in place where, you know, we had library staff that continued to, you know, be here and be part of the library department, the community, be able to kind of grow and continue to move, and have kind of set goals and positions that they can attain to achieve further down the line. So that position, we're creating it to be flexibly staffed. So whether it be someone that does meet that criteria, we can then offer that. Right now, the way it's still staffed is going to be a librarian, with the possibility of it being flexibly staffed as a Deputy County Librarian, if that need, need it be. If we do need to increase the expenditures related to that position, we can definitely add it on. As you mentioned, there is a large increase from last year to this year, going from 864,000 in 1920 to 1.4 million in 2021. A lot of it has to do with some grants that the library has been able to procure for some positions. So a lot, some of these are limited term positions tied to these grants. So what will happen is you'll see an influx, or an increase in some of these, some of these, some of these positions. So for example, looking at our staff table, we see that it went from seven positions in the adopted budget in 2021, to at the end of the year, we had 10 positions. So three of them, they had come into the department, were a limited term based off a grant that was created. So right now, we have 10, and I know I've communicated with Nora about a lot of these positions and the needs of the department as it kind of grows. And as we begin to kind of, begin to operate in more of a COVID environment right now, and looking at how that's going to look. So these are all different areas that we're addressing. If, if...
Maybe Nora could speak to it?
It was perfect timing as she walked in. So I says, come on down, Nora.
Good morning, Board members and members of the public and those that are here today. I was in my office, and I heard the conversation as I was multitasking, doing other things. And I thought that I should come to, if I needed to have any, provide any clarity regarding this. In 2006, when I was first hired, and I was offered the opportunity to be a part of the organization, I found a library that was basically a check-in, checkout library. And the needs were huge. And I discovered this because one of the first things that I did was go out and visit schools and talk to teachers. And they certainly enlightened me about what they would like to see in their library. Moving along, two of the things that they said, they wanted bookmobile services, and they wanted literacy services. I contacted the state. We did fundraising in concert with the board. And by 2008, we had literacy, and we had quite a bit of funding for the bookmobile. I saw the need for a strategic plan. And without revenues, we had to go forward to find someone to help us do this. And again, the social capital, which we're rich with in our community, people wanting to help, helped us to get that strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, it talked about two things, basically, the space and the technology, and what they needed. So I'm giving you this background because I know that many of you are new. In the years to come, there wasn't possibility for the physical space. I could not do that. There was a big recession. But we needed direction, and we did a feasibility study. Again, it showed that we need a lot, I'm sorry, not a feasibility study, a needs assessment, followed by a feasibility study. Today, our library, Board members, and I thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for supporting the library through very difficult times. You didn't close it, you believed in what the library was doing. We've been able to go from a check-in, checkout library to a library that operates at a system level. We have gone after, we were the first library in the state of California that applied to a senior grant. That's huge. A little, small, tiny library was given that opportunity. And we did. Where are we today? Brings us to exactly what you're asking. At one time, we were a service area system, because there was too much compartmentalization, there was not sufficient cross-training that occurred to be able to carry it further. Today, we have a bookmobile, we have our library services, which many individuals call us, because they want to know how to be able to do these things. And we have a literacy technology mobile that we got from the state. What occurs here is that we need to continue to develop and grow, but we need to have the proper structure in place to be able to continue to do this. So I think it is fitting and appropriate that we have the type of staffing structure that will continue to facilitate and support the direction and the growth of your public library.
Thank you. We'll hand it back to you.
Yeah, before we go further, I just, as I said, I've known Nora for a long time. We met inadvertently when I was on the Board of Trustees for Hollister School District. And I got to know her on a personal basis, and she is what you call the epitome of a librarian. She lives it, she breathes it, and she's always thinking of ways to fund our little library. And it's my hope that the four of us sitting up here, and whoever's going to fill Mark's District Chair, will see that this community needs a state-of-the-art, real library. And as much as I love the one across the street here, there's bigger and better things that the county can have. And so I fully understand the Deputy Library position needed. And though Nora is small in stature, her shoes are significant, and the Deputy Library is going to be needed, because it's going to take two people to do what she's able to do. And so if there aren't any other questions or concerns, we've already passed that, so we don't need to pass it, right?
Yeah, you already passed it. But I think what, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I apologize again for the, you know, the numbers were a little confusing, but I'm not sure I got an answer on what, how much the additional from Gabriel. And I know Nora came up and talked about the, more of the philosophical reasons for it, but I was just trying to get the numbers, just to make sure that I'm aware of the dollar amounts we're talking about.
So if we want to look at the numbers, adding in on the deputy position, as I mentioned, it's a relatively new position that the department, and this is something that kind of even came out of last-minute addition that we're looking to do in the budget. It's still relatively new. The position will still need to be brought to the board to add everything included within it, to, as an increase. I think, I think, this is from the projected numbers that we ran, the increase from the library two, then going on to the Deputy County Librarian, the increase will be somewhere along the lines of about 50,000 to 60,000, going from one position to the other, because the second one, obviously, the Deputy County Librarian does command a higher level of expertise and responsibilities that they have to handle and deal with. So it's more of a management kind of position. The way that right now, the library is structured, I think Nora, you're the only, she's the only one that is a management staff within that department. She has a lot of other staff that help in that regard, but just like Supervisor B. Gonzalez mentioned, she does fill just those shoes, and she's supposed to, you know, adhere and move, and make sure that the library has everything that it needs. So I think it's warranted.
And then, so we would be considering this down there. I just, you know, it's an institutional change, and we've gone from seven to 10, and I get it, we're going to have to grow, especially if we have a new library at some point.
Yeah, and like, as I mentioned, it's a position that is flexibly staffed. So what the position right now, it's being funded as a library one position, but let's say then we would be needing to fill it as a Deputy County Librarian, we would bring this item to the board.
Right.
Because if there is a significant increase, like I mentioned, 50, 60,000, then we would bring it to the board for the board to take action on it, and decide whether it warrants us to be able to fill that position in the year.
Okay. So, but approval today, obviously, we're approving the dollar amount, and we're just going to be looking at the specific position later. I know it was, at some point, it was on our prior agenda, and then it got, our agenda for tomorrow, and then it got taken off for some reason, but probably maybe because of this.
So, so I'm just going to clarify one last piece. So the position itself is just staffed as a flexible staffing, the same as the library one, two. We could hire, we could bring in a staff either a library one or a library two. In this case, right now, since the position still has not been approved by the board, having it incorporated into the budget allows us the possibility in the future, if we do want to hire someone, as long as the position has already been brought to the board.
Yeah.
Via this item.
But I assume we're going down this road, because we're going to hire somebody. We're not just creating a position just to have it, right? I mean, I know we have a lot of those out there right now, but this is a specific position, and maybe there's an in-house sort of promotion that we're looking at, I don't know. But, but we're not, I assume it's not going to just sit there. We're approving the increase, because Nora is going to go forward on day one and look for a person to fill the position. It was just on our agenda for tomorrow. So that's all.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
At times, Board, I see the opportunities that lie out there for us. And as much as I would like to go after those positions, it's just not possible at times, because there's not enough hours in the week. And you want to do a good job with whatever you do. It's not a good idea to reach out for so much and then do very little right. This position will give us that greater opportunity to reach out for more of those opportunities that we could get a hold of and deserve to have. But because of the lack of strength within the department, because you've got these other, these other elements that you're already working on, it's not possible. I see this position as a wonderful opportunity, not only that it'll match where the library is at today, but it will also help us to continue to bring in the revenues that we could get from funding from other places as well. Thank you, Board. And I apologize, I wasn't late, I was in my office, multitasking, but I thought I should come anyway. And thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Supervisor Cosmic, I would like to say just one more thing. I've talked a little bit about the social capital in our community. I'm from San Jose originally, worked over there for a long time. And there were volunteers. But the volunteers that we have in San Bernardino County are precious. They're precious because they help us so much. I've never done this publicly, but I'd like to say this. I want to thank B. Gonzalez for being part of that precious social capital at that particular time that was so significant. We had children sitting on chairs that were too high for them. And B, as a volunteer, with other volunteers, went down to the city of San Jose and was able to bring chairs at a very minute skill price for our children, not to have to climb on chairs, or our seniors not to have to sit or our seniors not to have to sit on tables that were rickety and falling apart. I apologize, I've never said this to you publicly, I should have. Thank you for all you've done for the library. Appreciate it.
I forgot to send you the email, Nora. Don't make me cry. Yeah, Nora, as I said, we loaded up my pickup truck, and a library in San Jose was closing down, and we literally filled that to the brim, tied it down, and we took all the inventory we can take from that closing library to bring it to Hollister. It was a long day, but as I said, as Nora said, I have been a friend of the library forever, and whatever I can do to make sure that the county and the children of the county get the services that they need, I will do what I need to do. And so, on that note, there weren't, there isn't an official vote because this already had passed, and so that's a non-issue, so then we'll go to the next item that you had, Supervisor Cosmiki, which would have been item number eighty-three, the Public Health Administration. What were your concerns?
Actually, one moment, I had a question on the housing as well. And again, this is the same issue that the numbers.
So, help me, help me clarify, so eighty-three is not an issue, or eighty-three is an issue?
Yes, I just had a quick question on it.
Okay, go ahead, and what's your question on number eighty-three?
No, my question is actually on fifty-one, my issue is on fifty-one. And I said sixty-five, and again, I apologize, the numbers were, you know, it says sixty-five right next to the thing, and I jotted down the wrong number, so that's my apologies.
What was your concern, and its item number for my clarification, what number is it? It was already passed.
It's fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, housing under the RMA, okay. So, what is your concern on that one?
This is the Housing Programs Coordinator contract, Affordable Housing? Jamila Saku?
No, so, there's a couple of different areas. So, the Housing Coordinator, as you see, the only expenses on here are services and supplies. Let me jump on here. It's only the contract piece, so it's only, as you mentioned, it's only the Housing Coordinator, but the actual program, it's, there's an item that I'm going to be touching on, on the, on the regular agenda piece, which does more with affordable housing, and it touches on, I'm going to speak to some of the reasons why we're, it's being shown through a different item, but yes.
I guess I just would like to have a brief discussion on that contract in particular at some point. So, I, is that, that could be done under the?
I think so. I think if we, we also have Benny and the RMA Department, they could speak a little bit more to it.
Yeah, I think Benny would be able to speak more eloquently to that. Benny, is Benny on the line right now? Can Benny, can he go ahead?
Is now the appropriate time?
This is the time to do it.
Okay.
Yep.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm on the line.
Thanks, Benny. Yeah, so Mike, well, first off, the, my understanding is we have this agreement, we split it with the City of Hollister, essentially, this contract for Housing Programs Coordinator. So, I was wondering what our costs specifically to that position are, if we have that, I didn't, I couldn't see a specific number. And I apologize for such a, and if we don't have the exact cost, that's fine, I guess I'll get to my, my issue. My concern is that, I think we saw, we had a presentation on affordable housing recently, that we've had somewhere around a handful of affordable housing units built in the last handful of years, and it's, for me, it's a big sore spot. And I know, I don't want to get into affordable housing. We, I think, I've heard from others on this board that we all agree it's a priority that we need to do a better job as a county of promoting and developing affordable housing. So, I'm wondering, how much do we pay for this contract? Because I'm not so sure we're getting value out of it, to be frank.
Mr. Chair, members of the board.
We can.
I have a pair of members of the board.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's Benny Young. This is a contract that is split with the City of Hollister. So, our cost is around fifty thousand.
And is, if, can we clarify where in the, in sort of the budget here that we, again, I apologize if we've already, and this is a temporary due pass, so none of this is permanent, obviously.
So, I think for me, a little bit of clarity, what are you looking for specifically? Do you want to see, do you want the contract, the contract amount?
Well, I guess at some point, we should have a discussion on what our goals are with that person that is contracted, and how do we reach those goals, you know?
Yeah, okay, so I think, this is my recommendation to your board. I would, I would recommend moving this forward, but I think in another agenda, I think we should come back, we can discuss the contract, we can actually meet with the city. I think that there's, it's a lot bigger than that, because we're jointly working together, and there is a splitting of time, so there is some cost that, I'm just trying to glean what you're looking for, like, either it's, you know, supplies and other things that she may be using, it's just she does split her time physically at RMA, and then also I know she has, she spends time in Hollister. So, there is some cost there, some services and supplies and other things in that, in that office that are, that are, that she uses, that there's a cost to it, obviously. But, but I think from the duties that are assigned, and, and I think the, what's requested within the contract, I think that's what you're more referring to, right? Like what, and I think that's something I think we should take back to your board at a later date, and discuss that a little bit more thoroughly. That's, that would be my recommendation to your board.
I would concur, because I would like to know specifically what she does, what she's accountable to us, and I understand it's fifty percent time with the city, but I share your concerns about affordable housing and it not being fully addressed, and so.
Yeah, and again, this is a budget, so we can address services down the road, we can, you know, cut services, we can change services, we can request whatever that your board is looking for. But we have some, we have some funding here to address that, so that's what this is about.
Great, yeah.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree, agree with Supervisor Gonzalez. Thank you for bringing this up, and yeah, it is a big issue that we need to figure out, how do we do a better job going forward, so, thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez, did you have any comments, since we're all chiming in? I take it that's a no. Okay, so we don't need to do any with that one, so then we will then move on to item number eighty-three, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, no, and no, no, really, the main thing is just, I know this is largely subvention funds, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there's some big increases, I think they're necessary increases in public health, considering the world we live in, especially now. I just want to make, make sure that there's clarity on the breakdown of subvention versus if there is, are any general fund. My understanding, we really don't put much of any general fund into, into this area, that's all.
Yeah, so just a point of clarity, you know, subvention, and that's a term that's, that you use, it's usually funded by the state, state supplies funding to, or can be other funding, it's managed, it's non-general fund money is basically what it is. And Gabriel probably could speak a little bit more eloquently to it. He came from a subvention fund department, and some of those department budgets are complicated. There's, there's a lot of funding that comes through, that can be realignment money, nineteen ninety-one, realignment, two thousand and eleven, there can be a lot of other funding that funnels down into the subvention departments, Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health Services, those, those types of departments. So, to answer your question, or maybe to more emphasize, yes, you are correct. They're outside general fund money, they're non-general fund money, and that's what this department, how it mainly operates, but Gabriel?
Yeah, CEO Spinoza pretty much hit the nail on the head. The subvention funds receive funding from various revenue streams, whether it be the state or even the federal government. They get money from Medicare to handle their administration, they report their expenses to the state for them to receive reimbursement, whether it be state, state money via realignment one, realignment two, the nineteen ninety-one, or the two thousand and eleven, or any other form of funding that they get through grants or services that they charge. Or, also, they could be providing a service to a, to a department where there is a need that they need to provide, so it's, there's another form of revenue that comes in. There could also be collaborations where, let's say, the department wishes to do something for the community, and it involves, let's say, one or another of the general fund departments, there could be some funding where the general fund does put in a little bit, when it's, when it's something for like a public good for, for the community.
So, as an example of that would be, you know, we have like a maintenance of effort for certain things. I know the courthouse, we have a maintenance of effort for that, even though it's kind of a separate thing. There's the public assistance that there's, that we actually do supply some funding for. So, there's, there is some, you know, I know at one time that we provided a decent amount of money to that, that number increased quite a bit, and then we looked at other programming within the subvention funds to offset those costs. So, there is, it's mainly.
General fund money.
But there's, general fund would be a very small amount.
Zero to just very, very small.
That's all I need, thank you, appreciate it.
One other piece I want to address, and maybe help out a little bit more. And this also ties in with the government, the governor's budget. He did make sure to address a lot of these areas, so even his budget, as he was getting it sent through his January budget, and then his May revise, and then his upcoming one, now that they're going to be passing it. There's a lot of money that the governor is putting in and tying to, both in the healthcare, social services, and in education. What that means has been that, since these, 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 these funds are subvention funding, they receive the money directly from the state. They come to the county, but it goes into their subvention fund, it doesn't really hit the general fund, so. And that's something that the governor himself, through his letters and everything that he's been providing, definitely making sure that he's addressing areas of concern within the state, which are for him, education, social services, and health and wellness of the community, and also the homelessness situation. So, yeah, a part of, part of, part of this, some of these, some of these units within Health and Human Services, like Enrique's CSDW, which does work with the local homelessness community, there's, there's a lot of grants and opportunities within those.
I'd like to add just one more thing, just primarily from an educational point of view. There are, obviously, there is a cost to the general fund in many cases, and it's through like an in-kind fund. So, as you see, administration did a lot of work with Behavioral Health and getting their building. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes things, staffing. So, I think it's a good point to bring out to the public, I think, that there's, there is a cost, and there is even somewhat of a burden on staffing at times for some, certain projects, certain things that are occurring. We do have what they call a cost plan, an eighty-seven plan, that we, you know, usually get reimbursed over two, it's usually two years out. But a lot of times, depending on how we account for that, most of the time, we don't get, you know, a lot of funds out of that because, you know, it's only as good as the data that gets put in, and a lot of times, staff time, let's say, administration, your time as an example, we don't really account a lot of times with some of the things that are worked on there. But I just wanted to share that with you, that there, that there is other, there's a general, there is work from the general fund side that goes into these offices at times, and I just wanted to share that, that was it.
I appreciate that, and my larger point, I guess, and we can get into this when we get into the general discussion, is that, you know, I'm a believer that we have to be careful about, with our general fund dollars, you know. I feel very, I feel very concerned about the economy and where potentially it's going. And yes, we do need to create positions in some areas, but I just want to be making sure that we're really watching those general fund dollars closely as possible.
I want to reiterate as well, I think you bring up a good point, Madam Chair, if I may. This, keep in mind that these are subvention funds, and these are programs. But this, this thing resonated in my ear all the time, because Joe Paul and I have had many conversations. At the end of the day, who's on the hook is a general fund. So, it depends on the situation, it depends on what it is, it depends on how committed we are with certain things. Ultimately, the general fund could be on the hook with some of these things. So, so you bring up a really good point that there has to be, we have to be mindful of even the subvention funds and what those programs look, and the willingness, if there's a need to end certain programs, how that's tied to staff and services and a bunch of other things that go along with it. We have to be cognizant of that, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, are there any other concerns on item number eighty-three from any of the board members? If not, I'll go ahead and go to the public. Are there any comments on item eighty-three from the consent item, from whether it be here in chambers or on Zoom?
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine on your phone or the raise-your-hand icon on your screen. No comments on Zoom.
Okay. So then, if there aren't any comments here in chambers, what is the will of the board for item eighty-three, consent item?
Make a motion, will you approve it?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Four zero on that. So, with item eighty-three taken care of, that takes us to the regular part of the regular agenda. We have item one oh one, these are non-departments, and we'll go with, go through each one of these items listed, item one oh one through item number one forty, one forty-six, I believe, sorry, I licked my fingers and looked at the right mask. One forty-six, okay. So, the first one is item number one oh one, home, home loan fund.
Gabriel?
Thank you, thank you, Chair, Board, Board Supervisors. As, as you mentioned, and, you know, Supervisor Cosmiki is actually getting a little bit ahead of it, we're talking about what the housing unit is used for. So, that one is used to incorporate the contract that we have with the city for the Housing Coordinator and the work that they do. And now to talk a little about what they're actually going to be working through. So, Budget Unit twenty-nine seventy, the Home Loan Fund. Right now, we have it as in receipt of one point one million of a grant that we're going to be receiving from, from the state. What this grant is going to be doing is, it's going to provide first-time homebuyers, loan assistance to qualified, very low and low-income applicants. This is all work that's being done in collaboration with Health and Human Services, the county, and this contractor through the housing unit. So, this is one of the projects that they're going to be working with and in charge of. The reason that it's appearing also within, within the regular agenda is something that I wanted to highlight, just to make sure that the board is aware of different programs that are happening here within the community that we're looking at addressing, definitely affordable housing being one of them, and this being a project directly targeting that area. Definitely wanted to highlight that for the board, and just kind of have this kind of as a discussion item. This one didn't have any, anything actionable, I just wanted to bring this up to the board and if it was okay to approve this, this budget unit. And I'm going to turn it back over to the board in case you guys have any questions on this.
So, because this was pulled aside, and there was some sort of significant alteration than just whatever was granted last year, correct? That's what, okay. So, any concerns or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, I, no concern, I think it's, it's a great project. This is a sweat equity project that I've heard referred to. How many homes are involved, Gabriel, do you know?
Not a hundred percent. If RMA might be able to answer if they're on the line. Because I know one of the things that, and while it was kind of rushed towards the end, where we're trying to add it on to the budget, was because they had already sifted through a lot of the applicants that they wanted to have these loans available to, and they wanted them to go live July first. So, since our due pass with the budget is allowed to go live first on, live on July first, we wanted to make sure that all of this was incorporated within the, within this year's budget, and this was brought out to the board's attention, so they were aware of what we were doing. I'm not entirely a hundred percent sure on how many of the, of the customers or applicants were going to be helping out, but we should be able to help out a decent amount.
Okay, thank you, it's, it's, yeah, this is, to Supervisor Cosmiki's point earlier, we need a lot more affordable housing, this is the kind of creative stuff that we need more of here. Thank you.
Okay.
I can get the the number for you.
Okay.
Provide that.
Any comments from Zoom?
Jamila Saka has her hand raised.
Good morning, Board. This is Jamila Saka, Housing Programs Coordinator. I do want to let you know specifically with this home grant, it will service at least a whole of the grant. It's set to service sixteen applicants or sixteen future homeowners. And then the project entirely is twenty-four single-family homes. So I hope that helps answer that question.
Thank you, Jamila.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments here in the chambers? Okay. I'm just going to kind of digress a little bit on this item. When I was elected, I I told everybody that I'm going to be like unlike any other supervisor they've ever had before. I don't own a business, I don't own a home here any longer. I did own a home on Gonzalez Drive that was the product of self-help, sweat equity. And so my ex-husband and I, when my son was two, we built our own home on Gonzalez Drive. And we received a grant from the federal government to help us. We had, we got a loan, a home loan, you know, and worked toward paying it off during the time when the we had the economic downfall and the crisis with the housing. We became victims of that, and I lost our home in the process. But sweat equity is an amazing product. The residents, the homeowners, they build love, respect, and appreciation for building their own home. And and individuals that receive a home through this program, they're going to be like your perfect homeowners, tenants, you know, they appreciate it. It's it's a it's a hand up, it's a help up to people who can never afford a home. And I'm glad to hear that this program, that we're going to continue this. I know that the program that we were participated in was through the the federal government and an organization called Techo out of Monterey County. And so I look forward to sitting here on the board and knowing that other families in this community are going to be able to participate in that because I know that it just did wonders for our family. And so, as I said, we don't own it any longer. We lasted through poor decisions on my part, but I commend the county for being able to do this. It's awesome. So, thank you.
Want to add one thing, Madam Chair, as well. There there might be a fluctuation, might be an increase in number that we may be able to help. So what we'll do is I'll ask staff to come back with a more clear presentation near board, and really outline the program and outline the assistance that we're going to be able to provide to our local residents.
And excuse me, just as a follow-up, because I've heard so many, you know, great things about this, and why why not more of these kind of projects? I mean, it kind of begs the question, we've been so unsuccessful. Everywhere else, you know, same thing, affordable housing is such a problem. Something like this is such a positive thing. You know, can we build on this and, you know, no pun intended, and, you know, do more of these kind of programs?
I would say in short, the answer is yes. I think we've been progressing. We've been trying every year, going after funding, outside funding. I know that there's been, we've been keen on looking at receiving, for any developments, actually receiving some funding for certain for programs such as this, working collaboratively with with Sunny's group, CSDC, I believe it is, as well as, you know, another group. And, you know, I think these are great programs. Behavioral Health has had ransom programs for housing, Health Human Services. So I know that we have been working diligently on different programs. And I think we can just make it grow. So the answer is, I think in short, is we can. I think also too, we're we're in a unique situation, a unique area too, because cost of housing is so high. It's difficult to create, reduce, you know, housing that is affordable. Because even the affordability of creating a house just in general, when a piece of plywood is almost a hundred dollars, it's difficult to, even at cost, to do that. So there's a lot of work that I know that these groups actually do. They, you know, they go after, you know, free lumber. There's a lot of things, there's connections to make those costs go down, free labor, other things that that go with it. But I think at the end of the day, the answer is yes. One thing I will I will highlight, depending on the project, as an example, San Juan Oaks, we had a development agreement with was Pulte Homes at the time. And we actually had allocated about six million dollars. A portion of that was going to go to programs such as this. So the vision even back then, which has been a while ago, eight, maybe nine years ago, I can't remember now, seems a decade ago, feels like, what was to increase funding and look at other options to be able to help the local residents. So that's just FYI on that. Yeah. So we'll back to you, back to you, Madam Chair.
Sorry. So then, what is the will of the board for item number one oh one? Did we get a public comment on this one? Okay, sorry. The will of the board on item one oh one?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve it?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we're first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We have a four zero. Let's go ahead and go on to item number one oh two, Board of Supervisor, supplementary budget amendment.
So, thank you, Board. So item number one oh two is a bit of a cleanup from a couple of, an item from a couple of board board meetings ago. So the board approved ordinance number one oh, one oh two one, or one thousand zero twenty-one, which approved a compensation increase for the board of supervisors. So we need to account for that in the upcoming year. So all this item is asking for is for the board to allow for the increase to take place in the budget. And again, the reason for it was because before the budget was put together, there wasn't any authorization on the increase. But now that there is, I need to account for it in the budget.
Back to you, Madam Chair.
So, item number one oh two. Do we have any members from the public that would like to make a comment on this? Board members, while they're looking to see if there's any items. Does anyone else have any comments for number one oh two?
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No comments on Zoom.
Okay. Any in chambers? All right. Supervisor Cosmiki, go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. I was just curious about the services and supplies. I'm guessing we spread those out over all the departments essentially, and there's some sort of algorithm involved. But the hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, I, you know, it's not like we have this twenty, I know we have, we get like that small allotment, maybe that's in there, the thirty-five hundred for, you know, discretionary and, but but I don't, I don't use twenty thousand dollars in paper, that's for sure. And I know there's travel and things like that that are, but just so the public is aware, maybe we can mention, because otherwise that number kind of jumps out.
Yeah, that's that's what I was going to say. There's there's a lot of other other things. Normally, under normal, a normal budget, there's activities. I do know that, as an example, in July, there's going to be travel that's authorized for NACO. So they're actually meeting in person. So there's there's obviously, you know, with the budget for that. And there's there's quite a few meetings that that your board members do attend up and down the state, as well as is attending in Sacramento. So there's a lot of travel, there's a lot of communication, both in Sacramento and in in Washington, that your board must attend and should should be attending. So there's just an overall cost there associated with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Quick question for Gabriel. So I understand the the need for adjustment for the increase in salary. It may be I missed this, but it shows actually on this where salary and benefits is is actually down from from last year. It flow is flowing through other charges? Is that's where the the increase is is reflected?
The salary and benefits piece?
Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-one's four oh nine, twenty-one twenty-two, three ninety-five. So obviously, other charges must be where you're reflecting the increase.
So and that's the that's the reason that I'm coming here for the board is to ask for the increase. So the budget as it sits right now, doesn't have it?
Oh, it does. This doesn't reflect it, then?
Not yet.
I'm sorry. I didn't.
Yes. And this is the reason why I'm coming to the board, because since the item was just barely approved a couple of board meetings ago, it wasn't part of the the published budget. But now that it was approved and it's going to be taken into effect, I need to then account for it. So the the seven seventy-five will, it's going to increase to closer to a million dollars with the increase of about two hundred thousand.
Okay. And and that that increase goes in effect, is it the beginning of the fiscal? When's that officially go into effect? I guess I should know that, but.
I'm sorry. Can you clarify your question?
When does the increase
September.
Become effective?
It's after this, after.
Because of the comp stay.
It was after, it was sixty days after.
It was sixty, yeah, sixty days after the last hearing. So the last date, it was last meeting, so probably.
I was I was thinking of the end of August, and probably not effective to the first pay period or
That's correct.
In September.
It's about Septemberish timeframe.
Yeah, that's what I anticipated.
Yep, that's that's about right.
So this increase is actually, it's not a full
It's not a full year.
Full year. Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification. And so with the, when we approve this, we're approving this increase. Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, one more quick question. Are we taking into account the the vacancy as well? There's four to six months. It's probably going to take the, just when we do the actual numbers, I just probably want to make sure we do that.
Yeah. And the thing is, that's the thing, we usually budget. Again, keep in mind, a budget's the best plan, but we didn't, we obviously didn't plan on somebody leaving an elected seat. So those are things that do come up. We can make mid-year adjustments as well. And again, those are, those are some of the things that, just as an example of the numbers that we talked about in the very beginning, you know, we we have to budget for these items, but a lot of times the physicians are not filled. So then all of a sudden, it shows up as a kind of a negative in some cases. So, yeah. But we'll, we'll work on that and and get that dialed in on the adopted budget.
So Supervisor Hernandez, do you have any concerns on item number one oh two?
No concerns, Madam Chair.
Okay. So if there aren't any further questions? Have I gone to the public? I was asking Tiffany if we had gone to the public.
Go ahead. Go ahead and
Okay.
Go ahead and go to the public.
I'm so sorry. Madam Clerk, can we go to the public, please?
You'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments on Zoom.
Any comments here in the chambers? I see none. So what is the will of the board for item number one oh two?
Move to approve number one oh two.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four zero. That will take us to item number one oh three, county admin.
So, thank you, Board. So number one oh three is our budget unit ten forty-seven, disaster recovery. Budget unit works in continuation from the last fiscal year. So the county, as we sit right now, this fiscal year, we received six million dollars for the American Rescue, Rescue, Rescue Plan. In the upcoming year, in in twelve months' time, we'll be receiving another six million dollars for this. The funding in this unit goes to goes towards various projects in the community, whether that's addressing homelessness, clean water, sewer, broadband projects. And with this unit, I just wanted to kind of highlight some of those projects that we're wishing to do this year. This is more of an informational kind of educational piece of funding that we've received in previous years and what we're looking to do this this upcoming year, specifically in the areas of homelessness and 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 water treatment projects. So what this unit is doing is it's addressing those concerns, and it it's going to allow for us to put together a plan with the board's approval to move forward with these projects. And with that, I turn it back to the board in case they have any questions.
And one thing, Madam Chair, if I may, we will be coming back to your board with a clear, defined budget for this. We're just right now authorizing the ability to to spend the money, but we will come back and then let your board deliberate, discuss, and kind of create the policy in the direction you like to see that money being spent at a later date.
Okay.
Madam Chair, two questions. One is, just looking back, you're showing under twenty twenty-one
Mm-hmm.
A seven million dollar revenue and six point one million expenses. What was that? Can you further explain that a little bit? And then my second question is, the the six million one hundred eleven thousand, it's a very specific number. I'm just curious, how did we come up with that as far as expenses for for this year, this coming fiscal year?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for your question. Supervisor Tiffany, to answer that, the reason that in the twenty twenty-one budget, we included seven million dollars is because we included part of the FEMA reimbursement cost for some of the programs that we're operating in the community, whether it be the great plates or some public reimbursable costs. With those in the budget, we were set to receive, we received six million dollars of the CARESAX package. And then in addition to that, we projected to receive about a million dollars worth of FEMA reimbursable costs. As of yet, we haven't gotten the full, the reimbursement from FEMA yet on some of those expenses. We have been in in talks and collaboration with with our FEMA representative and and all those stuff to make sure that we get those funds to the county. And we're actually taking, you know, taking really big steps to making sure that that happens. I think it's going to happen in the next probably couple of weeks, as some of these projects are kind of tightening up and dwindling down as they're completed. Now, on the expense side, as you mentioned, what we budget on there is more or less what we think we're going to be spending in some in in some areas, whether it be some of the projects on some of the rough estimates. So what this allows us to is allows us to have a plan of expenditure for areas where we think we're going to be putting together some of these projects. All this is, is just allowing us some flexibility. So by the time that it does come to, for us to bring some of these projects to the board, we already have the funding there kind of flexible to move forward. The only thing is, we need the board's approval to move forward with the projects. And at that time, we will come to the board with those.
Okay, thank you. I, and and getting back to what you're just talking about FEMA, and we talked about this a little bit before, because the way the money flows in, and of course, it it comes over different fiscal years. So somewhere is it showing as a receivable that's sitting there on the books, that we're waiting for this money to come in that eventually is relieved? Is that how it's accounted for?
Right now, it's not accounted for as that, but with the auditor's office, that's more than likely what we're going to do is counter receivable for funding that we're potentially going to be receiving from from the FEMA federal government program at some point in the future.
But they have to authorize it.
Yeah.
So they have to give us an approval letter to say, yes, you can count it as a receivable. The problem is, right now, you, we cannot until they authorize it.
So you don't count it as receivable?
We don't, right.
So at the moment, I mean,
Shows the
Who knows?
Right, exactly.
In theory, we're getting it, but we can't show it as receivable yet.
That's right. And and we're not the only county in the same boat. All counties up and down the state are confronted with the similar situation.
Is is that the way it works with also, in some cases, with state money? Is it really federal money we're talking about, where and is primarily FEMA money where there's that issue?
I don't know if Joe Paul can answer that. I I see it a lot more with FEMA and Fed, but I'm sure there's probably, he's been around longer.
Good morning. Good morning. Chair and Board Supervisors. The customarily, the the state, they authorize funding via legislation. And so we always know via the legislation, what what are allocation going to be amongst the fifty-eight states, uh, fifty-eight counties, sorry. With FEMA, the only time we can really recognize a receivable is when we get that that a commitment letter in hand. Because it could, it could, it could, it could be several years before we see any any sort of funds. And so the only thing that we can rely on is that commitment.
I see. So for the moment, this shows nine hundred thousand that we're in a deficit, I guess, in this one particular fund for last year. That will sit there until we get the official word. Also, with the, in regards to the American Rescue money, the twelve million dollars, we've gone the six million. We're scheduled to get another six million. Is that a receivable? Or or, I mean, is that in a different kind of category? We're confident we're going to get that, so that's a receivable? Or is that, again, we don't know until we get it?
I think with, as it relates to that, we we, what money we receive, we included, like, for example, in this fiscal year. But the money that will is committed to come in, you know, I'm you know, I'm, I'm, I'm tempted to say it would be, it would be a receivable book, because it is a, it is a formal federal commitment. But it's not FEMA, this is, this is a different, different funds, but I'm, I'm not sure on that.
It's, it's, I mean, and, and I think how staff views it is very similar to what Joe Paul Gonzalez just mentioned with regards to the state. It's a very similar, the feds put in timelines, they put in dates, these are the dates you're gonna receive the funding.
It's legislated.
Yeah, right, and so that is more of that commitment, but the FEMA piece, that is, I mean, I know that when the floods occurred, that lasted for, man, almost ten years, if I recall, or even beyond that, by the time the county started seeing some relief. So that can take a long time, the FEMA. And so I think that's the issues, I mean, I don't wanna speak for Joe Paul, but those are the, those are the issues that we have from an accounting perspective to kinda go back to your, if, if you can include it in the books, basically. You can unless you have a letter.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That plus the fact that when we have to receive the funds within sixty days of the end of the fiscal year, to be able to include it as a receivable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that was item one oh three, have we gone to public comment on this item?
No, go ahead.
Okay, can we do so now then?
You'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen? No comments on Zoom.
Okay, any here in the chambers? I see none, and individuals shaking their head adamantly, none. Okay, so on that note, what is the will of the Board for item number one oh three? Any comments, concerns beyond what was already stated?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, four zero. That will take us on to the next item, item one oh four and one oh five, and I see the Sheriff is here, or the Sheriff to be is here. So if you wanna come on up, just in case there's any questions.
Madam Chair, can we hear both those items at the same time?
Sure, four oh five, for, one oh four and one oh five, yes, please.
Thank you. Do you wanna go ahead and quickly open it up briefly and then pass it on to our Sheriff? Go ahead and go through the.
So, primary purpose of budget unit eleven seventy-five, operations and one one nine five corrections is just kinda to highlight our two, our units, two of these units for the Sheriff's Department, see kinda what they're working with and what they're, what they're doing. Highlight a couple of the increases in this year's budget, for example, we're adding a position funded by AB one oh nine. There's some vehicle purchase and equipment purchases being funded by impact fees within the law enforcement, impact fund. That's the operations one, and as you mentioned, going over the corrections one. Significant changes this year is, we're gonna do a little bit of modification with some of the staffing to come during the year. So that's something to look out for. There's some, some staffing switches that we're thinking about implementing and doing between both the corrections and, and the operations division. And there's some finishing touches on the, on the jail expansion that we're just gonna be completing. One thing that they wanna highlight, obviously, is we had the successful ribbon cutting of the, the new jail extension, which is amazing. I hope you guys all got to tour it, it was amazing in there, it looks, you know, state of the art, brand new. I think it's gonna be a great addition to what's already there. So those are the kinda items I just kinda wanted to highlight, and as you mentioned, we have incoming Sheriff Taylor here.
Like to invite him up and maybe say a few comments with regards to your two budgets.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board, and thank you, Gabriel, it's, it's been really nice working with Gabriel so far. I'm actually getting up to speed, so the way our, our, the current configuration of our Sheriff's Office under Sheriff Thompson is that we have three divisions, we have an administrative division, an operations division, which I run, and a corrections division, which is run by Captain LaMonica. So I haven't been really in tune with the budgeting for the jail up to this point, cause it's not my division. But I do have Kelly Kennedy here, and I like to put her on the spot whenever I can. So if you do have any specific questions about that, I do know that we're, we are trying to ramp up to get that, that facility open around August. And with that comes some mandated staffing, so I know that that's something that we're definitely excited to, to get up and running to provide programming and provide some services to our, to the, our residents there. And as far as the operations staff is concerned, I think we have some pretty exciting additions that are funded through AB one oh nine. There are really shortcomings that we, our office currently has, which is with some front office staff and with an IT support, which will really make us be able to, to do our jobs a lot, a lot easier, a lot better, so I appreciate that. And I'm open to any questions, and Kelly's here because she's the brains behind the budget.
Madam Chair, a couple of questions.
Please, go ahead.
So there was two questions, and, and maybe I didn't look at this right, but when I was looking at the, the number of, at the, the number of positions, both in terms of the, the operations and also the corrections. So with the, it, it looked to me like, but again, maybe I saw this wrong, that at least what we were seeing, corrections was down an officer and operations was down a deputy, but then I'm seeing an increase here, which makes more sense to me. And I guess my big question is, is we've opened a new, a new facility, so my immediate thought would be, there's gotta be an increase in the number of personnel to run that facility, but maybe that's all already somehow accounted for. That's one question for the jail. And then the second question is just a broader, you know, question. I, I know we're, we are spread awfully thin, we've talked about this before. Particularly in, for example, South County, although I guess it's better than it was at one time, because there is a dedicated deputy. But I just, I, I'm just curious, your thoughts about what the coverage is for operations with our county going forward?
If I may just highlight one thing, if it's okay with you, I just, when I'm looking at the FTE on the schedule itself, it shows an increase from thirty-two point five to thirty-three point five on the actual operations side.
Maybe I just, I read it wrong.
Yeah, so that, if you notice, there's a full FTE increase there on the staff report, so, yeah.
I, I must have seen, looked at it wrong, Gabriel.
I, I have exactly what you're, what you're gonna be, what's gonna clarify this. So in the previous, previous year's budget, which doesn't show on here, there were some positions that were entered as unfunded positions. Expecting growth in the future, they were added on to the budget not funded, so essentially the, the, the operations, the corrections side carried some of these positions as unfunded, which allowed for potential growth. Now that the jail is fully expanded, what we then did is move those positions from being unfunded to funded.
Okay.
So the total number of FTEs didn't change, but the total number of funded FTEs did.
So it wasn't fully crazy?
No, no.
So then that leads me to, I guess, a general, one additional funded position for corrections. How, there must be some shifting in terms of between the two jail facilities to just have one additional funded. So I guess that's a question now, how do, how do we do that, just with one extra person?
Good morning, over the past, I wanna say three budgets, there's been six positions added, new positions added. So that's where, and they've been anticipating the opening of the jail for the last three years.
Okay.
And so every year, the two have been added just to get them trained and going for this moment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not, it's not what it looks.
Okay.
But they're there.
That makes sense.
And then the loss of position is because they added a sergeant and switched positions around to add an administrative sergeant mid-year.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, that helps. And then my second question, again, just in terms of, which I know is, is where you've been, so as far as the operations go, what's your, I just a general thought about, we're adding a deputy, it looks like, in that area. And where is that coverage gonna be, and then just what are your thoughts going forward, you know, with the needs of Samuel County and, and operations?
I appreciate that question very much, so one of my struggles that, since I've been here, is that we have been significantly understaffed since I got here in twenty fourteen. And when I first landed here, we had one deputy and one sergeant per twenty-four, per twelve-hour shift. So we had two people run in for fourteen hundred square miles, which was absolutely unheard of. So we're not there now, and actually, we're getting, through the previous boards and this board, we're getting back to the, to where we were before things got really rough. So when the Sheriff was elected, the, the Sheriff's Office was cut by about fifty percent. So we've definitely made some end roads and we're, and we've gotten back up with our levels. The problem that I'm seeing right now is, is trying to figure out if we need to focus on adding more personnel or looking at compensation. So right now, I was just notified before I went on my weekend, that one of our just amazing top performers in our office is looking to leave to, to a city north of us. And the only reason that this person is looking to leave is because of compensation, the, just the complete difference in compensation. And so when I was talking to this individual, I'm like, well, it can't be that much, and then I went and looked at the city of, the city's website and, and what we are able to offer, and it really is different. So right now, though we have these positions allocated and they're, and they're funded, I'm having a hard time filling them. So I made a promise when I got here as Operations Captain, under Sheriff Thompson, that I made a promise to the staff that I would rather leave a seat empty than fill it with a substandard employee. And my, my, my concern is that I don't wanna fill a seat just to fill it. I don't wanna put someone in a, in a squad car and give them a gun and a badge just so we have someone out on the street. I want to make this place a desirable, professional, full-service Sheriff's Office with some people that deserve to be out on the street. So I think that's the, that's my struggle right now, is what do I, what do I wanna focus more on? Adding more positions that I haven't been able to fill to this point, I think, how many openings we have right now, we have three. And so each time that we open these positions, we're, we're maybe a year out before the person's actually on the street working. And if, and I think that since I've been here, we've, we've seen this constant cycling of, we get these positions and we almost get there, and then we have people leave. And that's, that's a concern of mine, is that I'm not gonna be able to sustain many more losses to keep the level of professionalism that I think we have going for us right now. So we don't have enough staff, and we're working really hard to get those positions filled, but I also need to make sure that I'm retaining the people that are here, so that we don't have this constant catch-up game going on. I don't know if that's helpful at all.
Yeah, no, very helpful, so a, a few follow-up questions. So we're looking at adding another position, plus there's three unfilled right now. So in theory, four, four additional positions in operations, if you could fill them.
Correct.
And then, so then, right now, the way it is, you, you said at one time, we had two people. I mean, right now, what is the situation on any given, you know, time? How many people are on the, you know, covering Samuel County at the moment, for each shift?
So on two of the shifts, we have a sergeant in three, and on two of the shifts, we have a sergeant in two. So we've almost, you know, we've doubled on two of the shifts, and, and when we are firing on all cylinders, that does not include the South County deputy, that's an, that's an additional position, so that kind of adds a quasi-fourth person during the day, because that, that individual runs a four, a four-day work week. So we're, we're just at about a sergeant in three per shift. And it leaves me with one sergeant and one detective that handles all coroner cases and all, all investigative follow-up, which makes them a very reactive detective bureau. So for instance, I know Supervisor Cosmic and I have talked before about issues on the Deansa Trail with break-ins. I don't have staff to be able to put out there in a unmarked vehicles and plainclothes to do surveillance-type activities, to do proactive detective work. We don't have that ability, because the only two people I have in the detective bureau are handling all the coroner cases and all the follow-up and the sexual assaults that come in. So it really, that, that division gets overwhelmed immediately, almost every day. So it makes it difficult for us to be crime preventers, it just makes us be crime reactors. And, and that's a, that's a, that's a problem for me, cause that's not the type of office that I wanna have. I'm also looking to do some shuffling around, we don't have any type of division right now that handles any type of community outreach or any type of community engagement. And so I wanna add that to our, to our community, is to add some community engagement, some, some outreach that we can actually, that's, that's, that's been the norm in, in public safety for years. And so I'm gonna need to have people to be able to go do those type of preventative, educational things that we currently are lacking.
So getting back to your, your point about the, not just the need to hire people, but to retain them in, in higher, higher quality because of the, in, in the amount that we're paying, when we're looking at this budget, in your mind, and maybe this is, you're not there yet, because you're just gonna be coming on board as a sheriff, are we gonna be in a position where we're gonna need to, to look to increase what we're paying in these positions, so that we can fill them? And, and I guess I'm asking this question of Gabriel and Ray, is, you know, if, if the Sheriff comes to us in three months and after evaluating, he thinks we need to bump these, the pay level up, are we gonna be able to do that as a, a Board and, and make the adjustments to the?
Yeah, so if I may, Madam Chair, I, I would, I would probably respond in this fashion. The first opening remarks that we had was twenty percent vacancy. It's not only happening to the Sheriff's Office, this, this issue, it's happening in every office.
Right.
That we have.
Public Works is the big issue.
Yeah, so, and you saw that number, how big that number is. So I wanted you to just picture that in your mind, it's, it's a systemic problem, it's something we have to address. And I know that we have the ad hoc that is addressing our economic development, because at the end of the day, that's really what we have to, we have to bring in more revenue, and, and I think your Board has expressed that, your support of that, in order to be able to cover that. Now, the unique thing is, is that we live so close, or we are so close, we butt up against probably one of the richest and wealthiest counties in probably the world. And they have the revenues to set their salaries at a pretty high level. We just don't have that type of revenue coming in, and it's very difficult. So it's hard for me to answer that question, because it's, it's a pretty complicated response. I think, I think it's something that your Board's gonna have to work with and look at, and will be working with the Sheriff's Office on that. I do know that there's been, that they've worked on investing technology in the corrections office, as an example, to reduce staffing, but I know the BCSS had some concerns, and I'm not sure where they stand, if they've made a commitment yet, to allowing us to have one person operate the entire facility, both the new and old jail. So those are things that we looked at, we invested a decent amount of general fund money to have the systems talk. So we could reduce staffing. So in general, in the opening remarks, we also covered the, the budgeting system and a lot of the technologies that have, have, we have before us to reduce staffing, to allow us to be a little bit more efficient. And we're, we're doing those types of things, but at the end of the day, we still need personnel, they need personnel on the street. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, it comes down to revenue.
Well, and also though, and again, I know we addressed this and talked about this, and that we're gonna be looking at this, that's why it's so critical in my mind, you mentioned twenty percent vacancy. If that's not a real number, which I gather it's not, you know, and so, I mean, in the case of the sheriffs or public works, there, there's definite need for additional people, but it may be that if it is overblown in some other departments, then we don't want that to hinder us from being, having the ability to make increases in the, in the positions that we do need to fill, because we don't have the, the money.
And we've done that in many offices, we've done it here in administration, we did, I believe, in county council's office. When we had troubles hiring somebody, we increased the wages. In other offices, we've done that, quite a few offices, we've addressed that, so behavioral health services, we've increased. I do know RMA, the road crew, right now, HR is working on that to increase the wages there. It is a problem.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not a problem, I'm just saying that because we are, we're showing so many open positions, obviously, that's increasing what our expenses are, but if we're not really planning to, you know, fill some of those positions, then it, we'd be better off reducing them, and then we'd have a better idea, really.
That's, and that's what we plan to do this next year. I mean, that's what, and I can, I can tell you that in administration, as an example, we had an assistant CAO. And I can tell you that in administration, as an example, we had an assistant CIO. We had it advertised for three years, maybe longer. And we recruited and recruited, and guess what? It was just not enough money for people to come down to our county. So, I think at the end of the day, it's not a... It's a tough equation, and we're working on it. And I think next year, we're going to address that to the best that we can. And again, that was one of the reasons why we actually installed or implemented the vacancy budget, to allow flexibility because of that. Because there may be a time where we can get somebody in an office. So, we've got to take it, grab it with two hands, and bring somebody in. And so, yeah, so...
Yeah, I understand.
And real quick with that Supervisor Tiffany, I don't think that just baseline salary... That's not what I'm going to come in front of this board and just say, "Hey, give us more money." I mean, our office, we get paid well. We have nice benefits package. We have a fun job, right? So, I think that there's a lot of creative things that I can do in the office to pique interest for people to want to work here. So, when I worked at the city of Watsonville, we got paid really well over there. We had great benefits package. We had a lot of activity. It was a fun place to work. We had plenty to do. You were never bored. And we still lost people to the Bay Area over there. So, it wasn't just about the pay. And I'm always going to advocate that, you know, when things are good and when there's revenues, that we compensate our employees appropriately. I'm totally on board for that. But I probably will come back in front of this board and ask for some more creative things like some specialized assignments, incentive pay, some things like that that a person is not just going to sit here and say, "Okay, if I come to work in San Antonio County, I'm going to push a patrol car around for thirty years, never advance, never promote, never get to do anything different. But I can go to the Bay Area and they have motorcycles, horses, swat." You know, they have all these different things I can do in my career. That's what attracts most law enforcement, is the opportunities to go beyond just that one job. So, I think that if we can create those type of opportunities here, that in and of itself can get us to retain employees. Because some people that leave here, they come back. And the same thing happened in my prior employer. They left because they left for the money, and they realized that the culture was so much better where we were, that they want to come back. So, I think that if we can cultivate a culture here in this county, that it's not just about that they're compensated fairly and that we have some special things for them to be able to do, to expand on their knowledge base, to be able to impact the community in different ways than just in the patrol car, which is the heart and soul of our office, is the patrol division. But if I can create those interesting opportunities for people to keep them here, this is an amazing place to work. I came here on a pay cut. I came here because I thought my future was going to be better, and it has been. There's been... The positives about me coming here were far outweighed the cut I took in pay from leaving Santa Cruz County to come to San Antonio County. And I have caught up, and my life is great, and everything's good for me. So, I think if I can show that that's a possibility for other people here, that it's not just going to be about that base pay. It's going to be about being able to work... And I've also... We're really trying hard to cultivate local talent. I mean, we've been able to hire a lot of local people. We just finally snatched a kid from Anzar High School, right? That's working the street now. And if you want a ray of sunshine, please come across Deputy Sedaniel because if you don't smile after talking to that guy, then you have a problem. So, we just have this young, fresh talent that's coming here. We have local kids that want to stay here, that want to impact their community. And if we can make it interesting to keep them here, it's going to be about those things too, not just the base pay.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I know, being from the business world, you know, surveys always show that pay is down the list in terms of what's most important. And so, you make some really good points. So, I'm going to expect seeing horses downtown.
Exactly, yeah, for sure.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, the horse thing sounds kind of cool. I don't know. Take us... That'd be kind of classic San Antonio County. I'd like the thought about incentive pay. Obviously, it's tricky when you get into unions and negotiations, and we have a lot of other unions that are going to be keeping a close eye on that. So, I'd be interested to talk and hear more about that and how we can do that in a way that doesn't cause too much conflict. The compensation study, I was curious, you know, we had the countywide compensation study. It takes effect in September. Do you have the feeling like that's going to help your department? I can't recall how many positions were impacted.
I think it's absolutely helpful. And you know what, honestly, and I've talked to multiple people about this. You know, I got here in 2014, and I've had a great relationship with the people since I've worked here. I've been here only under CIO Espinoza. I've had a great relationship with Barbara. But I know that there was some old, bad blood with some of the veteran employees here that didn't feel supported. And I don't think that our staff feels that way anymore. They have a lot of faith in the board. They have a lot of faith in Gabe. They had a lot of faith in Stewart. They have a lot of faith in Edgar. And I think that our staff, at least the people that talk to me, they feel like they're in. They're buying in to what the county's trying to do and where we're going. And so, I think the class and comp study really helped. But like CIO Espinoza was talking about, we're getting to ninety percent of median. Well, the problem is, they look right there, and it's way more than up of ten percent. So, it's, you know, we're... I think it really said a lot to our employees. The counties that were included in the class and comp study, that was like a legitimate... I think our staff felt very supported that it wasn't that you're just trying to take these outlying counties with three thousand people in them that make really low pay and compare us against them. It was a legitimate, nicely-done class and comp study that I think our staff really appreciates, and they feel supported. So, I just... It's really difficult because there are agencies so close to us that are at the high end of the class and comp study, and they're within easy commute. So, that's a battle that we're having.
No, I appreciate hearing that. And I just want to echo what's been said already as far as revenue goes. You know, I think we have a board that's very, very pro-economic development. And we have, you know, and as far as revenue, I'm hopeful on the sales tax. I feel good about the cannabis potential. And there's just a number of areas that we're looking at. So, I'm just, you know, we're going to continue. I want all our employees to know that we're going to continue working hard at being creative and developing, you know, revenue generation that is long-lasting and sustainable. And I personally, I want to make it a goal. Hopefully, all of us, by the time we leave this board, that we're a lot closer to the Bay Area as far as pay. We may not get all the way there, but I really want to make that a high priority for this board, that we do generate significantly more revenue and that we're able to reward our employees that want to stay here, so...
There's definitely... We all know there's some employees that, at least in my office, we're not going to be able to reach. But the vast majority are... feel supported and believe in what's being done here. There's... Nobody believes that you're sitting on a pile of hidden money somewhere. I mean, everyone appreciates the effort that's being done in our office.
Great. Just a couple of minor things. There was that study done ten, twelve years ago, maybe longer, cooperation. I know we've probably talked about this with the city. That might be an area, just efficiencies, maybe going back and looking at that. And certainly not to suggest consolidation of any kind, but just, you know, maybe we missed some things. You're going to be bringing in a new, you know, approach, I guess, and you're going to be a new sheriff. So, I would suggest at least going back and looking at that and just seeing if anything fell through the cracks, per se.
Yeah, and I think the beauty of that, too, is I feel that I have a very good relationship with Chief Renoso. We share a lot of the same vision, and I think we could work really well together without trying to step on each other's toes. We can collaborate, I think, quite a bit with the city.
Great. And then, you mentioned communication. Maybe that's something we can... You know, I know the city of Hollister sort of had dual role when former Chief Westrick was a sergeant, and maybe even as an officer, he was a PIO. Maybe we can somehow incorporate when we do gain enough revenue to have a permanent PIO position. Maybe that can have somewhat of an emphasis in your departments that we don't necessarily have to go and hire, you know, an entirely different PIO just for the sheriff's office, just a thought.
Yeah, I'd say that that's not uncommon. I mean, there are some agencies and offices that hire their own. I believe Santa Cruz County has their own contracted PIO. The city of Watsonville Police Department has their own contracted PIO that's their own person. But then, there's other places, I mean, like ours, that they have a PIO that can speak to different things. And I have a great... Like, we're talking about our current PIO, Westrick. I have a great relationship with him, and I would have no problem with him speaking on matters of public safety.
Great. And then, last thought, this is totally just related to overall, those things we can do maybe to entice employees outside of just compensation is... And this is just a very broad thought. Workforce housing is something that, you know, I think we, as a county, should at least look at and have that on the radar as far as... I'm not an expert on workforce housing, but just generally, the thought of developing housing specifically for our employees. Housing around here, especially now, is extraordinarily unaffordable for most, many of our employees, and so, that's just an area I think we should look at.
And there's another program that we had over in Santa Cruz County that I actually took advantage of when I was a young police officer, was able to save up to be able to purchase a house. But it's housing, county housing for law enforcement, where you are kind of the resident law enforcement person in apartment complexes or different areas of town. But it's definitely an incentive that a lot of officers took advantage of, and it helped them to be able then afford to then invest and live locally if they were from out of the area.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Hernandez, did you have any questions or concerns?
No, I didn't have any questions or concerns. I actually appreciate what Supervisor Cosmiki mentioned. I know as a board, we've actually talked about it. Workforce housing is a great idea. You know, that was part of the conversation that we've had even as a board previously, which was basically focused on creating a benefit for the employment base, giving them a reason to stick around. And if they decide to leave, obviously, it's a benefit they can't take with them. So, it's kind of... It creates, I think, competition with other communities. If we can't offer the same pay, we can still offer some kind of benefit that gets them to stick around. Thank you. Those are my...
I know that he was having issues with his Wi-Fi, his service, and I saw a text that came in at ten that I didn't just read till about twenty minutes ago. So, I just wanted to make sure he's good. And I echo the comments that Supervisor Cosmiki and, as well as Supervisor Hernandez. And Tiffany had said that I would definitely like to see that workforce housing come to fruition because there's a lot of professionals in this community that can't afford to buy the houses at the market rate, and it's just ridiculous. So, that's something that I will definitely be working with you to make sure that that comes to fruition. Earlier, our CIO mentioned something about systemic problems in terms of retaining the, you know, gainful employment or our current staff and revenue. And I'm hoping that this board is going to wholeheartedly find ways, really creative to think about ways we can generate revenue so we can make sure that the pay salaries are comparable as much as we can be so we can keep the qualified staff that you trained and keep them on. Supervisor Cosmiki, you also mentioned something about the PIO. And I, too, would like to make sure that we look at the county, looking at a PIO for the county and going out, maybe an RFP of some sort, and making sure that that PIO can look at all of the departments and not just one particular to the sheriffs. But I agree with you. When I turn on the news and I see the Watsonville PD PIO coming out or Santa Cruz, and it's like, I recognize that face. I know that face. And I know whatever they're telling me, that it's bona fide, and I can believe what's being shared. And I know with all of the Facebook, everybody posting different elected officials from various jurisdictions post something, and it kind of just leads to lack of credibility here in the community. So, we really need to have a unified voice and making sure the message that we are trying to convey from an official standpoint is, in fact, the official word. So, thank you. You mentioned something about community engagement. I had a meeting with Chief Renoso last week, and you were invited. And I guess, maybe, we failed to communicate the details to you, and I apologize for that. But we had the conversation about community engagement. So, can you elaborate a little bit on how you want to go? I know that you are a proponent for community policing, and I'm thinking that's what you're referring to. But can you kind of just share with us? Because I think that's something that all of the board members on sitting here would appreciate hearing from you and the public as well.
Sure, yeah. So, where I grew up learning how to be a cop, we were definitely a very forward-thinking community policing department. And I think that from the time that you come on as a young police officer, it's not uncommon to sit in roll call and have your sergeant hand you a paper in roll call and say, "At nine o'clock, go to this neighborhood, this school, this whatever, and you're going to present on this topic." And it was done so often and spread out across the whole department that everybody that worked there became really an ambassador of the message of the department and also a liaison to the community. So, that's something that I've definitely seen lacking in our office, is that not having the people with the... I mean, public... If you haven't figured it out yet, I don't mind public speaking, but a lot of people do. So, being able to get our staff comfortable with going out and being in line with the message of the sheriff and the sheriff's office and what we're trying to do and have those, really, those community, that community engagement. The other thing that we have going on that's different in this community right now is when we have Santana Ranch, we have the new development on South Side Road. We have these large subdivisions going in that really is like city policing. And that's something that our office has never done. They have not done city-type policing. Neighborhood watch, traffic issues, parking issues, getting people trained up to be able to do stuff like that. The other thing that I want to do almost immediately is, we had a deal over there that was started by then-Chief Terry Medina. We had... Every officer had what's called an RA, or Responsibility Area. So, what I want to do is take all of our deputy sheriffs and give them an area of the county that they are responsible for, whether they're working or not. When they come back to work, they need to check in what's going on, are there neighbor disputes? Are there vandalism? What's crime look like? So, for instance, something like Ridge Mark, we would probably have to split up in a couple of different things, or the city of San Juan Batista split. You know, probably have a couple of different areas. Oak Creek, Quahalo, Santana Ranch. We would take these, the areas of the county, and we would split them into Responsibility Areas. And then, a deputy sheriff would actually be assigned to be responsible, to have their finger on the pulse of what's happening in that community. So, if I live in Stonegate and I have an issue, I know that Deputy Brown is my guy. So, I can call him, email him, get ahold of him, have him come out and do presentations. You get to know the neighbors. You get to know the block captains. You get to know that type of stuff. So, stuff like that, I mean, probably trying to think about too much too fast, but the Citizens Academy, I think, would be fantastic. I'm also... It's a little bit controversial, but I'm also considering potentially some type of sheriff's advisory board. That's probably the place that California is going, maybe even nationwide. But to get out in front of that, so just some things like that.
One more thing, Madam Chair. You had the thought there when you mentioned that. I appreciate all that. I really appreciate the creative approach that you're taking, the Responsibility Areas. That's, you know, I don't get into micromanaging, but you're telling us, so it sounds great to me. We're not too far removed from the Black Lives Matter movement. I think we're still within that realm. Just curious, as far as training, what's on the horizon for the sheriff's office as far as training and just the response to that cultural shift?
Actually, not... It was last year, the city of Hollister, the police department hosted it and invited us to it, and it was phenomenal, and I would recommend it for anybody, even countywide. But it was implicit bias training. And you think you're going to go in there and get just bombarded with negativity? And it wasn't about... It wasn't a negative thing at all. Everybody that went through it came out way better off than they went into it. I'd like to continue that type of training. Implicit bias is just... It was completely an eye-opener. We did the colors training here in the county. I'd love to see that continue because that helps understand how we interact with each other and what makes each other tick. It's fun, and I think it's a way to get to know each other. But definitely, there's... I want our office to get away from only doing mandated training and start getting to the point where we're doing proactive training that's not mandated, but it just makes us better. One of the problems we have on that right now is that we're on a three-twelve schedule, four-twelve schedule. We're on a twelve-hour schedule. Twelve-hour schedule doesn't give us any overlap. There's no overlap between shifts, and there's no overlap on either side of the week. So, potentially, looking at different schedules, which is probably going to make my staff really upset to hear, but I think we can have the conversation to work in some alternate-type schedules to get some overlap so we can start having training days again. Potentially, give them time to work out, have some type of fitness incentive program, things like that. But I do think that we need to open that door and talk about different ways that we can staff our community, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just to follow up...
Just to follow up on that, and I, I know when we talked a little bit about this when we sat down during the interview process. So do you see areas, and I know different communities are looking at this, where they're shifting some of the responsibilities away from police sheriff into other areas? Now with our county, this may be tricky because we're, you know, we're undermanned in other departments as well. But do you see that as an opportunity also where there would be dealing with, you know, mental health areas that you feel might be better served by, you know, a different kind of county, you know, personnel? I'm just curious what your thoughts are there.
Yeah, I think that we've all, and our CIO can empathize with this, but we've run into some of the hiccups even dealing with our homelessness. And Supervisor Cosmickey, the frustrations that we've had about the nuances of the criminal aspect as opposed to outreach and intervention aspect of it. And even in the meetings that we've had internally in this community, we've had people talk about, well, you know, we don't do enforcement, we do this. And so we have to kind of like, that type of reallocation of funding is, I think, important and just a new way to do the job. I think that you're going to find that law enforcement is supportive to not be the tip of the spear when it comes to mental health issues. We've been asking for that for years. And if that's something positive to come out of the tragedies that have occurred in this country, then that's going to be something that's going to be probably, I don't like the term, but a game changer for us. To be, be a tool in the toolbox for those type of responses because they are dangerous. But have the professionals respond to those incidents. And that, not only with mentally ill, but with juveniles. And then of course, what we're dealing with right now with the condition of homelessness and how do we combat that in a non-law enforcement way? So there's always going to be a part of us being involved because of the danger that's inherent in some of these things. But I don't think that it has to be this punitive law enforcement, put handcuffs on you, take you to jail for these type of issues. So I'm so open to that and actually thirsty for that to happen, to have some redirection of revenues to go towards mental health programs. Because honestly, that's going to, combating those problems in a different way will actually reduce our workload, which would open us up to be able to be more proactive, which then would reduce what we have to do reactively, right? So the best example, I think I probably gave it in some of the interviews that we did, but I had a doctor that talked about headaches and said that you can, it's easier to put out a fire in a trash can than in a forest. And so that's kind of the, that's the analogy that I've liked to use for years with public safety, even if we want to talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, which is gang investigation and gang involvement and what makes gang members tick. It's a lot easier to put those fires out when they're small than when we wait for them to grow out of control. And so I think it's the same type of thing when we can identify people in our community that are suffering from mental illness, from homelessness. We have juveniles that need some diversion, not some punitive, you know, arrest. Then we can squash these issues before they become big. And I can just, again, reflect back that years ago, makes me feel like I'm old now. But when I was at Watsonville High School, Salinas was a cowboy town. And now it's, there's a lot of violence in that town. And it's because they didn't put a fire out when it was in the trash can. They waited for it to be a forest fire. And now they're trying to combat that. And I think that that's what I would never want to have happen here.
Madam Chair, one quick follow-up. This is a great conversation. Going back to the behavioral health side, there may, you know, is, just, I'm wondering if, you know, we would somehow be able to, if we're going to add positions, you know, there's subvention funds involved, federal and state dollars potentially. I wouldn't mind seeing that be a goal of ours to gradually move toward having responders, you know, who their job is to go out to, as you mentioned, crime scenes and the homeless encampments or the schools to a certain extent. Not to take away from the sheriff's office. I don't think we should be cutting from the sheriff's office, but I think that would free them up more for the more law enforcement activities and traditional. That we've talked about traffic enforcement, for instance, and some of these things that we just, our people just don't necessarily have a lot of time for. So just as a broad sort of just, you know, vision, I think we should probably strategize to a certain extent how we can shift more of those activities into behavioral health and create sort of this cooperative environment between behavioral health and law enforcement. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, just briefly, I do know the CCP, which it has the Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health, the law enforcement probation and so forth. And actually, a lot of funds actually go to the sheriff's organization for such programs. So I think, I think what I'm hearing from you is somewhat happening, but I think we can be a little more focused and be a little more diligent with our new sheriff coming onboard. Yeah.
Sorry, the conversations have been so great. I'm taking notes. I don't recall if we went to the public yet.
I know. So we'd like to go and take that to the public, 104 and 105.
As we go to the public, what I would like to do is, once this item is been voted on, I would like to take a seven-minute break with respect to everybody who's in the room. Okay? So go ahead to the public.
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. You've been unmuted. Please state your name and you have three minutes.
Elia Salinas, good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. It is quite refreshing to hear Captain Taylor's ideas that will be coming to fruition sometime in the future. One of the things, questions that I have for the captain is with regards to staffing, what is, how many deputies do we have per population, per 1,000 in San Juan Batista? And I would also like to see, when you say community relations, I would like to see the deputies get out of patrol cars specifically in San Juan Batista and walk the streets and go in and introduce themselves to the merchants and to the people in San Juan Batista. I go back years ago when we used to have a, San Juan Batista used to have a sheriff and used to ride a horse through town and all that stuff. I can't remember his name now. But anyway, going along with what you're saying about the community relations, I know that you won't be able to do that in these large housing developments, but to drive through there and have your face be seen, I think is a great idea. Get to know who they are. I'm not a big proponent of the school resource officer. I think it's an authoritarian position instead of a friendlier position. But I'd like to see the deputies go out to the schools and introduce themselves that are in the county and so that they can see that the sheriff, the deputies are their friends. I've, over the years, have heard parents in English and in Spanish tell their kids, you know, "If you don't behave, I'm going to call the cops," you know, and that causes fears in them. So it would be really nice to see the deputies walking around in some of the county schools and introduce themselves. And as a deputy, you can't be a shy person. I know public speaking is completely different, but when you get out of the patrol car and you run to a situation, you're running on adrenaline. And so they forget about the fear of public speaking. So they may, it's a way to get used to being able to talk to the public and going in there and making, having relationships with the schools. Thank you.
So thank you, Elia. I appreciate your support and all your ideas. So I think we're pretty close to about one and a half per thousand. If we take just county population, that's out of the incorporated cities. I think that what we need to do is do a more modern staffing study because I think that we're not super far off with that. But we need, one of the issues that we have in our office is that anytime someone is sick or takes a day off, it generates overtime. And that's burdensome because now we're spending money on overtime that we shouldn't be if we had more dedicated staff. So I think with, one of the things that Kelly and I can do with Gabe is sit down and there's a few different models out there about how to staff per thousand residents. And then basically what you kind of have to do is overhire to have people that are out on workman's comp or they're sick or they're on vacation. So we're not paying overtime for that so often. And I know that Kelly Kennedy is probably grasping her hands and white-knuckled right now just talking about that. But I know that's a, it's a thing that's been really difficult for us. As far as San Juan Batista, I am in talk with the city council there. I have a really good relationship with their city manager, Don Reynolds. And the way that works is that they are an incorporated city, so they contract with police services. I think that we could probably have a longer conversation with our budget officer, but my understanding is that we can only give them what they pay for. They pay for one deputy sheriff, which is 25% coverage. And so what Sheriff Thompson did a while back is we went to a random service model of just having people there stop in and get the amount of hours, it's about three hours a day in the city. Three hours per shift, about six hours a day in the city. So what I'm looking to do, and I think what they're, they're asking for again, is to go back to the model of having a dedicated deputy sheriff there, which I think for the residents of San Juan Batista, I do think that that's an important role. What ended up happening years back is that when the, this is what I was told, when the deputy that was assigned to San Juan Batista was not on duty, people were being told to call back when he was on duty, which is totally inappropriate. So even though the deputy would not be there during certain days and certain times, that would not prevent us from being able to still respond, patrol and be part of the city and at least respond for calls for service. So I do think that's really important because then you, again, just like the responsibility areas, you have your go-to person. You know that you can call this guy or this girl and they can be the one to help you because they know what the backstory is. And it just makes things a lot easier. I don't remember if there was, as far as the schools, I absolutely agree. I think that I do have a lot of staff that, I have one guy, I'll just name him. His name is one of our sergeants, Brian Canez. He called me one day and said, "Hey, can I go down to Calaveras School on my day off and put on my uniform and go down there? I don't want overtime. I just want to go down there." And I was like, "Yeah, do you have a, you know, a niece or nephew or something?" And he says, "No. I just saw something posted that they're having a ceremony for some kids are being recognized and I think that we should be there." And I thought, "Oh my gosh, you're speaking to my heart," you know? I mean, that's exactly part of what the job of being a deputy sheriff or a police officer is, is to go do those type of things for the right reason. So I think that we do have, I know that we have staff now today that would be really wanting to go do those things, not in a adversarial SRO disciplinarian-type way, but just as a, just a way to get to meet the kids and get to meet the teachers and have those relationships. So I appreciate all those things, Elia. Thank you.
No other comments on Zoom.
I get accused a lot of speaking in cliches and I don't know why, it just comes to me. But the cliche comes to me, "There's a new sheriff in town." And I love it. I love your idea. I love your approach. And what Ms. Salinas was referring to was the whole idea of community policing. So you're on it. You live it, you breathe it, you're on it. And so I'm confident that, that as this new sheriff in town comes into fruition and into authority, that it's going to be the best thing that's going to happen to Samuel County. And so, thank you. So on that note, are there any other questions? And if not, we'll go ahead and what is the will of the board in terms of item number 104 and 105?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve 104 and 105.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Before you take your, sorry, go ahead.
Sir, go ahead.
Before you take your break, can I just add one thing? So as we go forward about speaking and stuff, I'm in the unique position and the fortunate position to be able to be the one that stands up here and speaks to you, hopefully on a very frequent basis. But I want you to expect that I'm going to have my staff speaking to you too because it's not just about me, it's about what they all do. And just as far as the budget goes, I promise you that I get to stand up here and we have these nice interactions, but Kelly gets to deal with the real Eric Taylor that doesn't meet the deadlines that she puts for me and the other captains do the same stuff. So and then luckily, the relationship that we have and the help that we've had from Gabriel and Edgar and everybody at the county, I'm the one that gets to come up here and tell you about my vision and my thought and what I want to do. But I can't, I can't say enough of just how hard Kelly Kennedy works to put this stuff together and what an asset it's been to work with, Gabe and Edgar. And so just appreciate that. I want to point them out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. So all in favor?
Oh, we did, we voted.
We said that, right?
Oh, aye.
Oh.
I don't know.
I didn't write four zero down, sorry.
I think we didn't hear from Supervisor Hernandez.
Oh, I am so sorry.
I said aye. I didn't say aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Okay.
Four zero.
I did say aye.
Oh, he did. Okay. Well, also too, silence is an affirmation. So I counted it as an affirmation. So it is 11:51 on this clock. Let's go ahead and take a seven-minute break.
Madam Chair, if we may, can you give us 10 minutes? We have to do a couple of.
You're the one that said seven.
I know, normally.
I will gladly give you 10 minutes.
Normally, but we have, we have some work to do.
I will gladly give you 10 minutes. So that would take us to 12:01 on this clock. And it looks like we are going to have some, an afternoon session, contrary to what you promised me this morning.
Before, yeah, before two.
It's okay. 10-minute break. Let's go ahead and take the break. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, is it possible we could hear item 106, 107, and 108, they're all related to RMA?
Yes.
If that's okay with your board?
That's fine with me.
Okay. So, Gabriel, you want to go ahead and move forward? And I know we have Benny and, um, and his team available as well, uh, to add any dialogue or comments. Gabriel?
All right, well, welcome back.
The council is joining us right now, surely will be coming in. Sorry, Gabriel.
Yeah, you're good. So, welcome back, uh, so as the, the chair wishes, we're going to be hearing number 106, uh, 107, and 108 all together, they are, they, all three of them do involve the, um, RMA department. Um, the first one that we're going to see is 106, or building and planning. Uh, this one is, wanted to highlight for two specific reasons. The first one is because we are seeing a very large increase from the last year to this year. Um, the reason for that increase is due to, um, a, a, um, the planning division is putting together a plan, uh, a, a, what is it called, a, a habitat conservation plan, um, funded via federal funds through the federal government. Um, so that's where we're seeing a aid from federal government of about 1.3 million. The, the, um, the expenses also increased, uh, a little bit more than 1.3 million. Um, and these are all majority through mandated, uh, plans requested by the state. Um, and one of the pieces that I'm here requesting for the board is that, uh, the RMA department came, came to me, uh, needing to increase, uh, for one section. So for this piece, they're requesting a supplemental budget amendment of 200,000 for our sustainability, sustainability master plan, uh, which is being, uh, requested via the state. Uh, they didn't provide any funding for it, so it's an unfunded state mandate that we need to, that we need to do. So they're requesting an increase of $200,000 in expenses related to other consultants. Um, so this is item 106, uh, going to 107. Uh, 107, uh, the request on this item is an increase in $50,000, uh, for building, uh, for maintenance of the solar panels in various county facilities. Um, so the way this, actually, uh, just to cover a little bit of background, the way this budget unit works is the majority of these expenses are based off a cost plan, as, uh, Joe Paul had mentioned. Uh, the cost plan works to distribute some of the expenses in the general fund to various county departments, including the subvention funds. Um, and that's how we can then recoup some of those expenses that are provided by general fund departments. Um, so what we're, what we're doing here is increasing 50,000, uh, in expenses due to cleaning of the solar panels and then we hope to, uh, recoup those expenses later, later on through the cost plan. So this is, uh, requesting to increase, uh, 50,000 in expenses due to the cleaning of the solar panels. Uh, before, they were budgeted under a different budget unit, but now we're, uh, in, in some discussions that I had with the auditor's office, we think that it's appropriate for this to be part of the ground and maintenance cleaning, uh, ground and maintenance unit, because that's, that's what it is, they're doing maintenance on the solar panels in the various county offices. Uh, 108, 108 is more of a highlight unit, um, this one, um, doesn't have any adjustment. Uh, I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the different, uh, areas that are, some of the different items within this budget unit that, you know, we wanted to highlight going forward in this upcoming year, specifically, for example, we're going to have an increase in staff. Um, we're, we're hoping to, we're hoping to add three new positions and then the potential to add in a couple more unfunded positions, uh, going forward. Our roads crew do an amazing job and, um, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of asks of them throughout the, throughout the county and the community. So I wanted to highlight, you know, a couple of the different things that they did, mentioning the CEO's letter, they, this year they completed over 10 projects throughout the county in roads and bridges, so they definitely do a lot of work. Um, so it's one of the items that I wanted to highlight. So, um, if there are any questions, um, I know we have Benny on the line, if there's any questions regarding any of these three items.
Madam Chair, thank you. Um, yeah, well, I noticed in the, um, the introduction of the budget, um, there was mention of 734 building permits issued. That's a big number. Um, is there a project that, is one specific project that's, I know we have several things going, but 734 is... We'll go ahead and I'll defer that to the RMA office. Benny or Mike, are you on the line?
Yes, uh, yes, Madam Chair. Recently, in, actually, you're going to hear about it tomorrow, during the, uh, department announcements, um, we had a public information request for data regarding, uh, building permits. And so we created a, uh, folder on the building department section of the county website that act, where the public can actually view all the building permits that have been issued each month, they'll be, it will be updated monthly, um, a few days after the month has closed. So we have the first, uh, six months up on the website. We are, are exploring the possibility of going back in time, um, as a result of a follow-up public information request, um, but I'm not entirely sure that we can, um, go back as far as they want. So, um, that, that could help answer your question. No, there is no specific project, although, you know, Santana Ranch is an extremely large project, Bennett Ranch was a large project, Sunnyside Estates was a large project. Um, and then, you know, just the annual building permits issued throughout our residences, um, during the year.
Mike, and that would include, you know, just small things like, uh, large fencing or, or like, uh, water heaters, that kind of heater?
Correct, it would include any, anything that would require a building permit.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that clarification. Um, and then, uh, the road crews, I just thought, I think, I think we're all, I believe we're all in support of, of that. Um, it's, you know, I think it's a positive for the county, I'm just hopeful that we can do some sort of communication on that with the public. I think as part of our, you know, we're all out there communicating, um, we're going to be doing X number of projects or dollars being spent and I, if we can get a dollar amount of some kind, uh, or positions in dollar amount, something that, you know, we can sort of attach to our communications, whether it's from the PIO or whether it's from individual supervisors, I just think that that's a big, um, big positive for the county and I want to make sure that we get that out there, that we're, you know, that we're committed to the roads and hiring these folks. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, will do.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, yeah, piggybacking on, uh, what Supervisor Casmicky just said, um, I think roads are something that all of us hear, hear more about than probably just about anything, particularly in a couple of the districts. One question I have is, if I looked at it correctly, um, I think in, under road maintenance, it showed, uh, one additional supervisor, five additional, uh, road maintenance workers.
Mm-hmm.
It said, but they, in some cases, they said unfunded.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, explain that exactly to me. Um, I'm not sure if that means that they're open, but they haven't been filled, or we've got them open, but we're, we don't have them in the budget at the moment, so I've got a question about what that means. The other, um, well, you, you can address that first and I'll go to my next question.
Thank you for the question Supervisor Tiffany. So to address that, um, we are adding three positions, um, right away to the budget for them to be able to hire for. Now, one of the reasons that we don't, I, we don't include every single one as a funded position is because when we were looking at, you know, the increase in staffing, we did see that there is a decent amount of vacancies within the department and we didn't want to run across the same issue that we have and we've been discussing it, this issue with vacancy budgeting. So what we, what we've been trying to move towards is seeing if there is a need within a department, move, uh, to only fund the ones that we think we can fill, but don't, don't handicap us in a way, or don't handcuff, handcuff us to a specific, um, to a specific, uh, uh, schedule, allows the flexibility if, let's say, all the positions are filled and we're looking in November or December and, uh, the RMA department comes to us and say, we, our positions are filled and there is a need, all we have to do is bring an item to the board to cause, authorize the funding for it. The positions are already budgeted, all we would, we would be asking for is there is funding available to authorize it, for them to then go out and recruit for those positions. So what the positions in this budget allows them to do is gives them that flexibility. We can give them some positions now for them to go out and recruit and then if there is a continual need throughout the year, they can then go out and get some more.
Okay, and then, uh, following up on, on that, um, much as like, um, Eric was talking about, Captain Taylor was talking about, um, on, in the sheriff's area, part of the issue I know in Public Works is not just the opening, but being able to fill it and being able to retain people. I know that we, there have been some increases in pay. Uh, as part of this budget, is it felt by the department, um, and this may be something that Mike can answer, um, that the pay level is at a level that we'll actually be able to fill the positions?
So, Supervisor, 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 uh, for our division goes into effect in September, it is hoped that that pay increase plus the proposed changes in the health benefit will result in additional take-home pay, um, that'll help, uh, address this issue. As a matter of fact, we received a resignation letter just this morning from one of our staff that identified low pay and the cost of benefits as the reason for his choice. It's unfortunate, but it happens and, uh, we, we have changed the position, so it's a continually recruiting position, so we don't have to stand up the recruitment apparatus each time that this happens. So, um, in the, with the hopes of the change that's coming in September, the proposed, uh, insurance change and the procedural changes we've made, it's, it's hoped that the vacancy issue will be solved. I might be able to report better on that come the first of the year than I can right now.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, um, do you know with, if we were to fill the positions that we're looking at right now, how many road crews do you, do you know what that translates into road crews? I, I know we're, there was a while there where we, if anything, had one out there and I think we're, we've improved from there, but do you, do you have a feel for that?
Correct, each changes will allow us to build two road crews every day. Um, with, you know, time off requests, leave, vacation, et cetera, um, having the three extra bodies is going to allow us to backfill those holes, so we have two complete crews out there at all times.
Thank you. And, and, you know, that's certainly an improvement. I'll just mention historically, if you talk to those who've been around for a long time, they'll say at one time there were five road crews in our county and, including one full-time South County that basically lived down there. And including one full-time South County that basically lived down there. So gives you an idea of, of, you know, how difficult it is to cover all the roads that we have with what we currently have. We still have a long ways to go, but two is definitely better than one. Um, last question, um, this may be for you, Gabe or Mike. Uh, I see where we have an increase, significant increase, uh, 21, 22 from 2021, which is great. But, um, there, the difference between the department request and the actual recommended budget is fairly significant. Um, in many cases, it's been the same. Do you know what the, the reason for, we're about 300,000 less than what was requested by the department? Do you know the difference? Does that have to do with those unfunded positions maybe, or?
Part, part of the difference is a little bit on the unfunded side. A lot of it, um, or some of it has to do with some projects that are finishing up. So there is expenses that are tied to the projects, whether it's bringing on consultants to do work on some of the roads and some of the different, uh, the bridges out there. Um, and as their work is completing, then there, we don't, no longer need to have that contract in place. So, um, or, or even within RMA as, 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 you know, we were putting the, the budget together and we were looking at what, what we were going to be presenting to the board and we were reviewing it. We came across, there were some expenses that we no longer needed to move forward, then we removed them. And then in the CEO recommended budget, those are the only ones that are remaining on here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez, do you have anything to add or say?
Nothing to add, this is Chair.
Thank you. Um, as to these three items, um, let's see, I have my notes on each different page. Okay. I just had a, it's not even a question, it's more of a comment. Um, last week, a week ago today, I had to go to Carruthers, California for, um, personal business. And we passed by the solar farm that they had there. And one of the things that struck me, that it was very hot that day and it's so dusty in that entire environment. I says, I wonder if anyone, they have tasked anyone to clean those shades because the dust was just so thick on it. And I wondered if that kind of diminished the, the, um, the ability for the solar panels to, you know, perform appropriately. So I'm glad it's a proactive approach that we're looking at, at that because that's, that's, that's a plus. Um, in terms of the staffing and the numbers for the road crew, I too, as Supervisor Tiffany had mentioned, I have some concerns of, of the county not being able to do the, what we need to do in terms of the public works and the, the staffing department. So, um, as you said earlier about that systemic problem of staffing, we need to do whatever we can to make sure that we have a, a full staff that is ready to carry the burdens and the responsibilities for, for that department. I know we're going to talk a little bit later on, um, in the month about the American Rescue Funds, but we need to make sure that we're, we're maximizing, um, that one-time money that we're going to be getting from the federal government. But no other questions. Okay?
One, one quick other comment. This is more direct. It's not a budget issue. It's more directed at you, Mike. And I'm going to probably be talking to Jason later, but, um, I know there's a heightened concern for good reason about fire danger.
Yes.
And one of the really critical things the, the road crews do are not just fill potholes, but deal with the brush along the side of the roads. Um, I was in a meeting, I don't recall which meeting, but, um, you know, one of the very significant causes of fire are, are by vehicles along roadside. So, um, it's really critical that we get out there and get that, you know, that, that work done as soon as possible. And I know that goes back to the number of people we have on road crews. So, thank you.
Staff is working on that. They've been working on that for several weeks. Um, I can report that one of the mowers is in the northern end of the county because I saw a mower parked at the airport this morning.
Great. Thank you.
I was just going to add one thing too. At, you know, at a certain point, under extreme conditions, I do know that it becomes, um, an issue for those mowers that go out because they can, they can hit a rock, cause a spark and then a light, they can cause a fire too at a certain point in time. So I do know Jason is very cognizant of that and, um, and that's why we need to have them do a lot of the work right when that transition, when, uh, the weather was still cool, uh, and the grass starts growing. That's when they, they got to hit it at that point in time. Just a next one.
Madam Chair, just like, just to add on, I appreciate that. I was going to bring this up tomorrow when we talk about fireworks, but I'll say it now that I, I totally agree. And, um, I know it's a staffing issue, but that really has to be a, going next year, we have to get out as early as possible. I know we're really late this year. Um, and this is, you know, I just, we got to keep our fingers crossed at this point. And so just like CIO Espinoza said, I think the earliest possible time to start that mowing, we need to start it. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I've had conversations with Jason where the frustration, he had one road crew and, you know, it, we get a little bit of rain. It's the perfect day to do, you know, start mowing and then someone calls in sick. I mean, this is what he's been dealing with and it really has a huge impact. So, yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Are there any comments from the public regarding items number 106, 107, and 108?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments on Zoom?
Okay. I don't think we have any in the chambers. Right? Nope. Okay. So then what is the will of the board, the board for items 106, 107, and 108?
I'll move to approve 106, 107, 108.
I will second that.
Second.
All in, okay, so we'll give Supervisor Hernandez the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 40, 1106, 107, and 108. That takes us to 109 through 141, uh, the CSAs.
145 actually. We're going to be hitting the CFDs as well.
The CFDs at the same time as the CF, okay. So 145.
Yep. Gabriel?
Thank you. Thank you, Board. So continuing on, uh, items 109 through 145, uh, CSAs and CFD budget units. Um, what we're trying to, we're, what we're wanting to highlight this year with the, with the budget for the CSAs and CFDs is that, um, we wanted to address a regulation that was, that's been in place where it is required for the CSAs and the CFDs to require a certain percentage in reserve. Um, it's roughly around 10%. It depends on the unit. So the CSA, uh, the CSA specific or the CFD in specific, but it usually averages around 10% that needs to be held in reserve, whether if it's for operations or capital tech. Um, and, and these funds need to be held there in order for, you know, continual growth or if there's a need to update a facility for one reason or another. Um, so what we're asking this year is for the board to allow us, uh, to approve a movement of a portion of unspent balance that they have in their budget units to, uh, a reserve account for operation and a reserve account for, uh, capital. So, um, I know we have, um, Mike here because, uh, he, uh, one of the items that we were looking at and he kind of had brought it up to my attention earlier on, I believe it was like in May when we were beginning to work through this process is that we needed to address this item. Um, and it was something that we were aware of, but we've never transitioned to making the actual move. And now we're beginning to take the steps towards that. I know that in some cases, some budget units won't have, uh, a budget balance to move to these reserves. And those, we are going to be taking, um, some steps towards allowing for those reserves later down the line. Uh, whether that involves increasing some of the fees associated with the CSAs, then those obviously will have to kind of go through the appropriate voting process to vent it out. Um, but those are some of the items that we're, uh, coming down the line. Um, so I, I think Mike is available in case, uh, the board or anyone has any questions on this.
Any questions of the Board?
So just to be clear, how does this, the shifting, you're saying where there's funds available?
Right.
There'll be shifting in reserves. Are the, the CSAs and CFDs, are they notified of this? And, um, do they have a say in, in this and, or is it just something that, you know, we notify them, we're going to, we're going to do it? And then once it's shifted over there, are they, we're going to require them to keep a certain amount of reserves in place? And then over time, I assume the CSAs that don't have the funds, we're going to be working with them to build up their reserves? How, how's that all going to work?
Yes. So, um, I could answer some of that. So the way it's going to work is like you mentioned Supervisor Tiffany, the CSAs all hold within themselves their own budget units. Some CSAs have funds available to create these reserves. Other ones do not. Um, and like I mentioned, the specific percentage amount kind of fluctuates from unit to unit. Uh, some, some might have the amount capable to withstand the 10% being moved over, but others do not. Um, what we're going to be asking and what we're asking for is the flexibility to allow us to create those reserves for the, for the units that do have that available. Um, none of that will in, in a, in a way affect the current budget for the CSAs. All of this is, is a balance sheet item apart from the expenses and revenues of the current year. Um, so the, the place where you're going to be seeing this is in the adopted budget within the CSA's budget. You'll, you'll see an item where instead of the funds being held under the restricted side, they'll be held in the reserve, uh, the allocation that's available. And like you mentioned, um, and one of the, one of the good things about this and, and, and the county kind of moving towards that is we and the RMA department brought in a CSA coordinator. And I know he was hard at work moving around and getting to know all the CSAs and the location. And this is something that I made sure to communicate with the RMA office and, and him to make sure that, uh, the CSAs were made aware that the county is moving forward with, uh, wanting to implement this, this regulation in place to maintain this 10%, uh, this roughly 10%, uh, reserve across the, across the different CSAs. Um, so the CSAs are aware that we're implementing this. And if there is any, um, if, if there's any, 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 um, question on CSAs that don't have a fund balance and there's issues with it, um, I know that there's going to be further, um, further work that needs to be done on them, specifically, let's say, the ones that don't have a fund, uh, where we would, in a way, if needed, need to increase, uh, fees in those areas. But I know those still need to go through ordinance and through the whole voting, out venting process. So everyone has a say into what is actually done. The only thing that we're trying to do is align ourselves with the, with the regulation. Yeah.
And that's a 218 process.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, for a couple of things, generally curious, are we, how much are we subsidizing the CSAs, if at all? Um, is for, nothing? Okay. Um, and then I. Let me, let me add for a point of clarity. Um, I know that there have been a few CSAs historically that have had some significant issues, um, i.e. Stone Gate with the well as an example. Um, the well, I think, costs over a million, maybe a couple of million dollars. They didn't have enough funds, so the county went ahead and subsidized that and then they paid it back. So as an example, that's just, that's just, that happens here and there, very seldom. But they usually manage it on their own. Um, I mean, from a, from a budgetary point of view, they usually manage their, um, the things that need to be done within the CSA through their budget. Okay, great. And then specifically Rancho Larios is in my district. Um, I know that we had some issues recently with some expenses over there. I noticed the budget for Rancho Larios in particulars, $300,000 in expenses and then the budget's showing zero revenue. Um, I'm sure this is a budgeting accounting issue, but if you could maybe explain what's going on there for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. So on, on the revenue side, there's nothing showing on there right now because, um, we're, I, I don't think we're collecting any more from Rancho Larios. Um, what is being used is there is a fund bounce within the fund. That's what, what's going to be getting used. Um, I know like you mentioned, there is some work being done out there and there's some work that's going to probably be continuing to go on forward. Um, and I think I'll, that's, that's kind of on the, on the fiscal side. I think probably maybe Mike will have a little bit more information on the, for those.
Supervisor Kozmicki, thank you for the question. Um, we actually have two open violations with the water board out of Rancho Larios and we're working through closing them. Um, one violation was for a spill that occurred when Rancho Larios changed the operator without our knowledge. Um, and the new operator caused the spill. Um, and then the other violation is that, um, we have not been budgeting any funds to maintain Rancho Larios. Um, on paper, we are still the permit holder for the Rancho Larios facility. Approximately 10 years ago, an agreement was executed with Rancho Larios, um, effectively terminating that relationship with Rancho Larios, taking over the operations of that facility. Um, as they were going through the process of terminating our permit, the, the water board actually refused to terminate the county's permit. So we've been on the hook for 10 years while Rancho Larios has been operating, uh, this sewer plant. Um, it all came to the head about a year ago with the spill. So we are actively working with the water board to, uh, complete the termination of our permit and get the permit assigned to Rancho Larios. And to do that, we have to have, according to our permit, sufficient funds budgeted to maintain the Rancho Larios station because they cannot, we can't complete this with an open violation. So this action you're going to take today by budgeting $300,000 to, as sufficient funds to maintain Rancho Larios will close that open violation and allow us to proceed in the water board's process to terminate, to terminate our permit and, and assign full responsibility onto Rancho Larios. Any funds expended, Rancho Larios is obligated to reimburse.
And so the $300,000, to be clear, that's coming from a, from a Rancho Larios fund of some kind? Or is that coming from the county?
It, it's either going to come from the CSA funds if they have some available. If not, like CEO Espinoza mentioned, it's something where the general fund will pick up and then as Mike just shared, it will be reimbursed by Rancho Larios.
And are there, what's our potential, is there potential liability? I mean.
Demand letter and then there would be potential liability, um, as far as the county implementing litigation if, uh, we did not receive reimbursement, that we'd have to get future board supervisors authorization for, but we can ask the reimbursement from the HOA.
And do you, to the best of our knowledge, do they have the level of organization? You said the CSA basically doesn't exist, I guess, or they're not funding it?
It existed, uh, it existed in the past. The, it just wasn't included in last year's budget. Um, and I think it was a couple of budgets before that where it wasn't included. It wasn't brought in until this year where they were trying to kind of close out everything and that's where Mike was aware of this, uh, water violation. So we needed to budget for the expenses to make sure that we cleaned and wrapped all of this up for this year.
And so collecting funds, do, do they, and I apologize for the ignorance here, um, what level of assessments are there? Do they, is there, is it a self-assessment sort of?
There's, um, uh, originally when we were going through the Prop 218, um, process, they didn't, they did not want to do a Prop 218 back in 2009. And the HOA, which was a very active HOA, took on the, the, um, they wanted to take on management of the, um, the system. And so they were supposed to take the necessary action at the state to get it transferred to them. But they're supposed to be collecting, they, before they, I believe, before they took on the management there, that they had increased their HOA fees. So I believe that they have enough money in their HOA dues to pay for the cost of the system. But they have not, as far as I know, transferred the system to their own coverage. So it's under their own name. It's still under the county's name.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Kozmicki, they have over a million dollars reserves, uh, specifically for sewer.
Good. Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Then if not, we go to the public, correct? For any item that they want to speak on, for the CSAs and the CFDs, items number 109 through 1, 145. Again, if you're speaking to one item, three minutes. If you're speaking to more than one item, you'll have the five minutes.
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Please state your name.
Can they tell us what item they're talking to so we can kind of follow along? Please.
Hey, yes, I'm just specifically going to go on CSAs and just a short comment is that it was not until, uh, Jim Galio came on board. Uh, so historically, the CSAs have not had a really good relationship with the supervisors, with the, with the county, I'm sorry, with the. really good relationship with the supervisors, with the county, I'm sorry, with the county, because no one was keeping actually an accounting of the CSA funds, and how they were being used, or if they were being used. So, my question to staff is, and then specifically with Larios, is they said that they didn't want a Prop 218. So, how is it that the residents, whether, you know, especially the new ones, are aware of what's going on? Because that's what happens when you come into it, you don't know the history of it, and all of a sudden, you know, you have... Have I been muted?
No.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Anyway, so just, I'm just wanting to make sure that the new residents coming into the CSAs are aware of what's going on. You may be speaking to one representative, and that's not going on. But in order to avoid and get ourselves into some kind of liability, I think that their whole associations need to be notified of what's going on, and we don't necessarily know that that's what's going on. And I, we know how association works, and some people are members of the association, and they just take over and control and actually, and make decisions for the entire, the entire association without the association knowing. So, I don't want that liability placed on the county. So, I just wanted to bring that up. There's been reasons for them. Historically, there was not a relationship with the county, so we need to make sure that that doesn't occur again. Thank you.
There are no other comments?
Chairperson Gonzalez, just so everyone's aware, we do have a public outreach meeting scheduled for July 28th, to go over CSA concerns and the budget in depth. Our new CSA coordinator is putting it together. We do apologize for the delay. We are waiting for him to come on board in order to schedule the meeting. And we have it scheduled for, that's all.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other comments?
No other comments on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Andy from the chambers? Okay. All right. So, what is the wish of the board for items number 109 through 145?
I'll make a motion that we approve them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. That takes us to the item number 146, Behavioral Health. And that looks like the final item of the day. I should not have said that, right?
So, thank you again. So, here with the last item, number 146. This is a simple adjustment towards the end of the putting together of the budget. Mental health was made aware of a state mandate through family urgent response care that they needed to put together. It's going to be a collaborative program between the probation department, and the Health Humanities Department, and Behavioral Health Department. Originally, the fund, the MOU setup between the two, between the agencies was only going to be 150,000, but then throughout the plan, it changed to it being 250,000. So, what this unit is asking for is to increase it by 100,000, based off the MOU agreement that they're going to have. So, this is just to account for the increase in the amount.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. That's enough, okay. Peter, do you have any comments or concerns?
No comments, Chair.
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone, or there is your hand icon on your screen. No comments on Zoom.
Okay. Any other board, in the chambers? Okay. So, the only comment that I have concerns with is the juvenile justice. I know that this just came to, it was thrust, literally thrust upon the county during the COVID downtime. And is that going to be dealt with in terms of the current budget that we did when we did the, all the other consent items? Is there funding in there to be able to take of all of the needs and the demands for the juvenile justice?
I believe so. I know that even as of last Friday, we were running some of the, some of the revenues that were, that, as you mentioned, there was some funding that wasn't going to be received by the departments any longer. So, we did account for that. And I know that in tomorrow's meeting, they are going to have an item to address, I think, your concern. And I know we did account for, because it was even something that I noted as I was reviewing the department's budget specifically. I looked at the probation budget, and I saw that there was a couple of funding streams where it just tailored off, and there was just zeros marked in those. So, I made sure to, you know, reach out to the department, get a little bit more knowledge and information as to why some of this was going on, and making sure that we're addressing some of these concerns. And as you mentioned, these are all mandates that were being kind of thrust back at the county. Some of it, just kind of thrown out at the county without really any inclination of funding available in the future for it, which I think is something which the state likes to do, is just give them the work and then think about the money after. Hopefully, it's something that they work at addressing, and make sure that it's commented and approved for in the future. But, yes.
Okay, other than that, I have no questions. So, what is the will of the board then for item number 146?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to take a silence as a yes. Four zero, okay, on item number 146. So, that takes us to the final budget deliberations. And we have a series of six staff recommendations.
Madam Chair, if I like, if you don't mind, I just wanted to have Gabriel, our management analyst, do some kind of final touches with what we've covered, and share with you some documentation for the supplementals, if you don't mind, and then we'll pass it back to your board.
Okay, thank you.
And this is also included within the staff recommendation within the final deliberations. I wanted to share with you the adjustments that are going to be made based off of the supplemental adjustments within the individual department budgets, and just a little bit of cleaning and touch-up that we wanted to make sure that we addressed. So, as I mentioned right now, based off the current budgets being put together, what the department is showing, and what I showed in the presentation, was only what was already approved within the budget. Now, based off of our meeting here today and your direction, there has been some supplemental adjustments that we were looking to address. So, the first one that we went over was the board of supervisors' budget, addressing the increase based off the ordinance. So, right here, we have our adjustment of 199,000, pushing our budget from what used to be 700, roughly 700,000 to closer to 1 million, as I referenced in the beginning. So, this is the board supervisor item, supplemental amendment. The next piece was the building and ground maintenance, accounting for the 50,000 increase in the solar panel cleaning. As I mentioned, this is going to be recouped in the, in the cost plan going forward, and the costs will then be split amongst the departments that are sharing the benefit. So, right here, we have 50,000 increase to maintenance of equipment, the equipment being the solar panels. The next item right here, our planning and zoning, as I mentioned, the unfunded mandate from the state based off the sustainability plan that they're wanting to put together. This adjustment used to be 7, 170, no, 1 million and, 1 million and 700,000. It is now 1 million and 900,000 to account for the $200,000 increase based off that mandate from the state. So, pushing the planning and zoning budget into an increase of 200,000. The last one that we just quickly went over was the mental health increase of 100,000 based off the MOU with the other county departments. What used to be in the contracts, 250,000 is now 350,000, pushing then now the mental health budget to an increase of, of an increase of 100,000 based off our budget hearing meeting. And so, these are the four increases that were reflected here in the budget process within the budget hearing. Another piece that we also wanted to touch base and highlight on is some of the, highlight some of the projects in the capital project schedule. More specifically, I wanted to highlight one of the projects that's being funded by our American Recovery Rescue Funding, our water treatment project facility. Right now, we have budgeted 3,500 is our projected estimate, based on actual expenditures and maybe a little bit less. But I definitely wanted to highlight that item, as well as highlight that all of the schedules and budgets are going to be part of the resolution item. So, wanted to do a little bit of cleanup, make sure that those are noted for in the meeting and the minutes, to make sure that the board and the public is aware of the changes that were being made.
Gabriel, can you do me a favor? Can you go back to that, can you blow that sewage plant numbers up? Because we're, I want to make sure I got the numbers are correct and accurate, because we may have to make an amendment here. And what's the number? Can you show, show me?
Right here, 300, well, I have 3.5 million budgeted to account for any expenses related to that.
Yeah, so the numbers, so, Mike, if you're on the phone still, my understanding is it may be significantly higher than that, more like six to seven. But are you accounting for that just for this fiscal year, and not the entire project?
Not the entire project. I know that there is going to be a leeway to get going on this project. It's going to take a little bit of time, making sure that we're collecting and have everything put together. And then also venting out these projects, because, so, as the funding was given out, there isn't a lot of real clear direction from the state, federal government. So, making sure that, we do put it in our plans as something that we want to do in the future, and we have the flexibility to kind of move towards that and do that in the future. So, we have, we have this in there. If state led, if the federal government comes out and says, no, you guys can't use it for that purpose, well, then we'll have to come back to the board and make an adjustment. But for our purposes, we want to make sure that it was noted as a planned expenditure, if we want to move forward towards that.
The only clarification I wanted to bring out is that, when you publish a budget, you have to publish it 10 days in advance. And so, there should be, what the board adopts is that published budget, plus any sort of changes that the board has decided on. The sewer and wastewater plant was not in that published budget. So, during deliberations, you'd, you know, it's been brought to your attention that this is, this is a project that's been added to the capital budget improvement plan, and that you as a board deliberate and say, okay, we're going to add that project to the, to the capital plan. So, that was the only thing that I really wanted to...
Yeah. And just to add for that, add to that, Madam Chair, if I may, is a lot of these things are changing rapidly. But we just got word that, you know, this funding, we were notified that, that an infrastructure project such as broadband and sewage and water was, was something that could be used with this funding. Well, recently, within this last week, or last week, there was more information, Q and As, that discussed having it documented and planned. And that's why we immediately got on it. We were like, you know what, we need to document this. Because if we don't document it, we may not, it may not work for us. So, we wanted to make sure that it was documented, and why it's kind of an afterthought. But I want to thank the auditor and staff for us kind of quickly adapting to this and bringing it to your attention and adding this. So, and if, if for some reason it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But at least we have a plan, and we have something to move forward with.
So, what figure are we looking at as we adopt this? Are we looking at the 3.1 or the 6. something for this fiscal year? Because I just want to make sure it's clear what we're doing, and I don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize, and we fall in line with that 10-day advance notice.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I can tell you that we usually budget for the year's activities. That's usually what we budget for. So, whatever it's going to, whatever we're going to be able to spend, I don't think we're going to be able to build the whole sewage plant within this next fiscal year. I think there's going to be a lot of planning, and there's going to be a lot of work that's going to have to be done. So, this is my understanding, what, that was a point of clarity I had asked earlier, was this, was this smaller amount just for the beginning stages? And that's what I was just kind of reassured. But I would like Mike to kind of chime in, if you don't mind, Mike, and kind of give us a little bit of a, kind of a, an overall view of this, and potentially what the cost could be total.
Is Mike still on the phone? Or is he?
Excuse me? Oh, he stepped away. Okay. So, I'll just kind of give a quick brief on that. So, the project potentially can be about 7 to 8 million dollars. And it looks like, you know, this is just budgeted just for this next year. So, that's, that's all I wanted to share with this board.
And then just for clarification, so if, as you said, that we won't be able to get this done in the next '21, '22 fiscal year, that 3.5 million, anything that is not expended will sit aside and reserved until that project comes to fruition?
And we will come to your board with the full budget, a full plan that would encompass the full 12 million. And then that would obviously be for future years. The good thing about this recovery plan is it allows multiple years. It allows us to work on this till 2024, which the last one, we only had a few months to get everything expended.
You, and, but you already mentioned this, but the full board still has to okay the use of this.
That's correct. We just wanted a budget for, and documented was really the kind of the big, the big part of this. We just wanted to document it. That was really it.
Right.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, yeah, as long as we're talking about this issue, so there isn't confusion in the public, we're talking about a potential wastewater treatment plant in the North County near the, near the airport, I would say, generally, for the purpose of creating an area and creating infrastructure for commercial development. And I think it goes in line with the conversation earlier about this board's commitment to revenue generation. And that's one of the, sort of the three areas that I kind of forgot to mention earlier, that this could be...
Game changer.
I was gonna, I was going to try to avoid that cliche.
As I said, I speak in cliches.
But this is a big, big deal. I think it's potentially one of the, one of the most significant efforts in the county in the recent history as far as the commitment to economic development. It's a big, big deal. And, and just so the public knows, that's what we're talking about when we talk about a potential wastewater plant. Thank you.
And we are not looking to do housing in that area. So, let's get this clear. Please do not get on Facebook, the supervisors are planning something for housing. No, it is for economic development, business enterprises, and so forth, that are within the county boundaries.
Absolutely.
Okay. Supervisor Hernandez, did you want to add something?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, not to repeat the wheel, I agree with the sentiment being shared. In general, my thoughts are, this is going to be, create opportunity, which is one of the things that a commercial development is going to want to, is going to consider, right? If there's almost shovel-ready type scenario for their project, this is one of the things that creates that opportunity for them, and obviously has them considered, especially since we're a lower-cost community, and I'm speaking specifically to commercial development, and that area being a commercial area, a commercial zone. So, those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll take it back to the agenda. So, we are presently at the budget deliberation stage. So, we're going to be looking at the staff recommendations in addition to the adjustments that we just mentioned. So, are there any questions, concerns from the board members regarding items number one through six on the staff recommendations plus the adjustments?
Madam Chair, can I ask just a couple of quick...
Please, please do. I have a list of my own here, so go ahead.
General questions. I don't know if we really got into this too much, but in a, in a big sense, where do we stand with reserves? We, we've talked about this before, that we, you know, we are, I mean, the good news is the county has had large reserves, and we've talked about, you know, what level it should be. I'm just curious, where do we, with this budget, where are we with reserves?
Gabriel?
Yeah. So, in order to understand where we stand, I think it's a good idea to see where we are with the current budget this year. So, as last I checked, we'll, let me, if I can then reference my slides. So as last I checked, we'll, let me, if I can then reference my slides. So for the general fund budget, for example, pop it up. So for the general fund budget, for example, in 2021, the revenue that we were thinking of receiving was close to about 54 million. Expenditures we had budgeted was about 63 million. So right now, as we stand, and I ran a report the other day, our revenues are standing somewhere around 47 million and our expenditures stood a little below 50, 50 million. So there was a lot of expenditures that were budgeted for that didn't come to fruition, whether it, those were because of vacancy budgeting and staff that just weren't, positions that weren't filled, or some projects that just didn't come to fruition within the year because sometimes, uh, the way that the budget works is a plan of expenditures for different programs. And sometimes based because of different issues that come up, if, if something just comes up and blocks the program for one reason or another, it was something set that we had planned for but didn't come to fruition. So that's how it kind of stands. So if I was to say right now, where do we stand? It was something that I also had touched on in the last special board meeting. I think that we'll be somewhere around breaking even to eating up a little bit of our reserve within the general fund. So somewhere between zero and about 3 million in the general fund reserves that we're going to be eating up. That doesn't account for restricted funding that we have set in place for other areas. Our overall fund balance that had come from last year to this year was around, was close to 8 million. So we're going to be eating somewhere between zero, zero and 3 million dollars out of that reserve. And then that, that's where the big area of concern had come up with the board. Hey, we're, we're eating into our reserves. We really shouldn't be doing that. We should be, you know, putting money away for rough patches if they do come later down the road and staying, making sure that we have some sort of a percentage set aside to fund growth. And that's where we started to implement these ideas of increasing economic development and looking at other potential revenue streams in the community to make sure that we're able to, to, to increase our revenues as our expenditures have been increasing, but also being mindful of issues within the expenditures, whether it be the vacancy budgeting and all these other areas and things that we have discussed here in this meeting today. So these are all, these are all good projects and these are all items that I'm hoping in this upcoming year, as this kind of budget completes and it's kind of moving forward as a status quo budget, I can begin to look at implementing some new changes going forward. So by the time that we stand here next year, we're looking at a much cleaner, much tighter run budget and operations. So we're actually able to see some truer, actual numbers to what we're looking like.
Madam Chair, if I may.
I was, well, I was just going to say, so somewhere between zero and 3 million of 8 million. So we're going to be left with somewhere between 8 and 5 million is what you're estimating in reserves.
Roughly.
On a percentage basis, I know we were, what, 12 to 15% before, so.
And again, keep in mind, there's a lot of one-time money that's being used. So obviously, like the roads and we've been using, uh, some of the, a lot of reserves that we, we've been using has been for one-time money. It's been for one-time expenditures to deal with all of our infrastructure issues. I was going to highlight that there's also, um, there's another element to this. It's not just that you have restricted reserves, there's tobacco securitization that we have, I don't know, I think it's $4 million. So there's other reserves that we have that haven't been authorized. There's, um, there's also some other funding for a tax sharing agreement that, that we had with the city that we've accounted for. So there was some funding there. But again, it's restricted as of right now. So there's, there's still some funding that may be freed up in the future. What I, what I would suggest and I would like to have is have Gabriel come back with, with a kind of a more general kind of where we stand with reserves and kind of highlight that at your board and just kind of spend some time with that. Because I think your board has requested, you know, using some of that money up and I, but I want you guys to, you know, really look at it to see what we can use to also, versus what we should have in, in reserve for kind of a rainy day and kind of where we stand.
And if I may add on to that, I just, and also setting an actual reserve policy, having a number that we can rely on, I think is, makes fiscal sense to me.
Yeah, great.
One, one last piece, if you don't mind, Maddy. Another piece that we didn't, we, we haven't accounted for is we, and on the revenue side. So we've been funding a lot of FEMA-related expenses. And just as we were discussing with Joe Paul, without an obligation letter from FEMA for us to account for that revenue, those have all been eaten away. So potentially, we could end up somewhere between zero and 3 million, but let's say in this upcoming year FEMA comes through and gives us 2 million back of expenses that qualify, then it's only, we're only down 1 million. Or if we're, if we're, if we end up at net zero at the end of the year and then, and then a couple of months down the road FEMA decides to process our requests and give us our money, we may end up positive on that side. So it, it's in a predictable.
And there's been some obligations that we fulfill, like addressing Southside Road. And I know that we're addressing getting reimbursed for that. So there's some, some things that are in the make that we hopefully get some money back that will offset those costs.
All right. So on that note, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, admin, department heads, everybody putting their head together, trying to get this, this budget before us within the timeframe. As we move forward, I want to make sure that as we look at the American Rescue Act monies, that we definitely make sure that we include broadband. We continue to work on our homeless effort and anything we can do to tap into those resources. I want to focus on affordable housing, including the workforce housing, affordable homes and sweat equity, that would be awesome. And definitely the sewage treatment plant, water treatment plant out there near the airport or past the airport, so that we can go ahead and focus on the, the broadband. Now, I did get a, a text as we were having the meeting here, and there was a concern about the, the budget that we passed for the parks. And there were, there was some concern if we were spending all the money toward the regional park. So Ray, I know we already approved all of the consent items and the discussion items, but can we make sure that there was potable water out there at the Vets Park and Historical Park? Because I know that's becoming an ongoing issue. And I don't know if that was adequately addressed in what we passed today. So, and if not, then possibly the American Rescue funds to, to deal with that, because I know that's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to look at that. But yeah, we can come back to your board and make any amendments or any changes as well. So we'll address that.
So are there any other questions or, yes?
Man, yeah, I just had a few, just finishing comments as well.
Oh, yes, sorry, go ahead.
Again, I want to echo what Turpersen Gonzalez said about just thanking the staff. I know this was a really big effort this year in particular. And so thank you to our admin staff and thank you to Gabriel. I think you did a phenomenal job. It's your first budget, so congratulations on that. I really appreciate that, your work on this. And also Ray's letter laid out gave that broader perspective about this past year and the many accomplishments this county has had. And I just, you know, really appreciate it. I really appreciate this county and the, I think we have a really strong employee base and leadership here. And we're almost through this thing. And I, I think that the credit for that really starts with our staff and the dedication in our staff. And so thank you. We just got to keep our fingers crossed that this pandemic is almost finished. Just a few little notes, I want to make sure that we're looking at our business license tax revenue. I know we've talked about that in the past, recovering that. It looks like we've, we're at 330-plus thousand. We projected upwards of 600,000, I think, when this started. And as far as I can tell, that, that projection was fairly accurate. We're maybe getting a little more than half of what we're supposed to be getting out of that. And I do just, I believe if, you know, we have to, to operate a business, you know, whether you like the tax or not, that's, it's there and you do have to pay that tax. And then otherwise, the, generally, I, you know, in the past, just, and I'm new to this whole thing, but there was sort of this expectation or culture, you may say, of departments bring their budgets and then if they have extra money by the end of the year, they, you know, there's sort of this rush to spend those dollars. I kind of take a different viewpoint of that. I sort of think that, you know, if, if there's excess money, that, again, we need to be fiscally responsible with every last dollar. And I, I'm not a big fan of this whole mentality of, well, you know, I had a vacancy, two vacancies. I have, you know, $150,000 left and so I'm going to go spend it on a bunch of equipment that wasn't budgeted. I don't like that. So I, that's, I'm just one supervisor, but I feel like we should be budgeting for exactly what we spend. And if there's extra money at the end, that the money should go into the reserves because we need that money. And then, um, long-term, I think, um, I, I'm not a, an accountant, but I, I would like to see, and we got, Joe Paul's, I think, our resident expert here, and Gabriel and Ray, but I'd like to see longer-term budgeting personally, a three-year budget or a five-year budget at some point. I know that's a big, big, big request and we, it's a staffing thing, but I think that would also ideal, that's an ideal outlook to me. And then, um, other than that, just, you know, we're going to, we didn't talk about nonprofits, but we, we just allocated a lot of money from COVID this year. And I think we generally do, if I remember, I don't have it in front of me, something like 100,000. So I'd like to have that conversation at some point and just from a policy perspective. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two very specific questions. I don't think they were touched on. Does this budget, um, provide for a lobbyist in this next, next fiscal year?
Does.
When I say that, I'm reminded that Mark, Mark's not up here with me. That's one question. And also, um, we've talked about this, but I don't know, and it may be within each department potentially, but what about a grant writer? Two questions. Thank you.
Yes, on both, on both accounts. We did discuss that with your board before and we did, we did put it in the budget before.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Supervisor, oops, sorry.
Yeah, and, and again, I just, yeah, I just echo what Supervisors Cusmickey and Gonzalez saying. Great job, very thorough and, uh, I'm new, new to all this, but I appreciate everything that you guys have done. And anyway, very interesting. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez, did you have any comments?
No, echo the sentiments. I appreciate all the hard work put into it. That's it. Thank you.
So I know that you wanted to go ahead and explain or comment on something.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is obviously, we're always learning from budgets and, um, you know, how we present them. And I know that this is new for Gabriel, so thank you, Gabriel, for all your hard work and staff auditing, work closely with him. And I think there's, there's still some improvements that we can, we can do. And so we'll be working on that over this next year and make sure that, you know, you feel comfortable. This year, normally for new board members, we like to get you a little bit more intimately in tune with the budget to really understand it, not in a public setting, but behind, you know, like in an office or something. It really, and this year was just so many things going on with COVID. We have a new employee, there's a lot happening. But this next year, I'd like to spend a little time with the board members and really delve into the budget and, and have a deeper understanding of it. And a couple of things that, to comment on as well is regarding the end of the year, normally, um, administration works with the auditing department. We try to close the books a month early. And sometimes I think we've done it sooner, so that way there's not a rush to spend. It has to, there has to be a reason, a good reason, if there's going to be any expenditures at the end of the year, because sometimes that happens. The other thing is, from a budgetary point of view, if you have savings in salary, that's the reason why we had the vacancy budgeting and that we would address those funds. It could, it was not, it's not allowed. Our policy doesn't allow us to move money from one budget unit to a service unit and then go spend it without board approval. The board has to approve it. So whenever, if ever, you see that there's a transfer of funds within a budget itself, but within the different area from salaries and benefits to services, that's, there has to be a good reason and it has to be a good reason in the staff report and in the presentation to your board. That's one of the things that we've looked at very closely. So when it comes to the salaries, that, that money actually goes right back in, back into, to cover the deficit that we've had. That, and that was something that we've been keen to address and look at, because that's how we're going to balance the budget. And so staff administratively would not allow any transfers for, for that very reason, because we had to balance the budget. So anyways, I just wanted to be a little bit clear with you, because I think that it'll keep you in tune. If you see, if you see something come to the board in regards to that, it, there's, there's usually a good reason. And usually it's where we've worked through it administratively, but we, we try not to, that doesn't happen normally. Okay? So, so with that, I, I just wanted to, again, thanks, thank everybody, the department heads and everyone for their support and working with us and being flexible this year. I'll pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
So to Supervisor Cusmickey, I just say, welcome to the world of government and fiscal years and spending. I've worked for the school, various school districts throughout my years and it's feast or famine. So when your, your fiscal year begins and everybody's getting everything need, and then at the very end, when they realize there's a surplus, it's a mad dash to get everything that they can get before the, um, the year runs out and steal within the allocation, you know, what's been budgeted. So you'll have fun the next year or so, learning all the different ins and outs and the nuances. So on, on that note, if there aren't any further questions?
There was one more comment. I just need to make it. I apologize for that, Madam Chair. For subvention funds, though, there are some, sometimes there's especially unique circumstances. It's not general fund money. And if they don't spend the money timely, then they lose the money the following year or the match.
Now, there's a penalty.
So I just wanted to make sure there's a caveat there on the subvention side.
If I may, I get the subvention, but I prefer not to have the feast when it comes to the general fund.
Thank you.
It's just the department monies is what I'm talking about specifically.
And we agree.
Yes, yes. So definitely not waste any kind of public funds at all, but if it's allocated to the department, then they have to do what they have to do, because we've already approved the budget. Okay, so then if there aren't any other further questions, I'll go ahead and take a motion for adjournment, since this was a public.
You have to do the staff recommendation and get a, we have to get a vote on that.
Oh, oh, sorry about that. Okay, so let's go back to the staff recommendation, the final budget deliberations and the staff recommendation with the adjustments. Do I have a motion on that, since we've had quite the conversation on that already?
Point of clarity?
Yes, if I could just have a point of clarity. Was there any need to adjust any of the exhibits to the resolution that was proposed, specifically the capital improvement?
Uh, believe not. Yeah, no, it was, um.
Those changes were included in that current one?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we're good.
And, and we have a copy of that?
Yep, you have a copy. And so it's per staff recommendation.
Yes, with the aforementioned adjustments, yes.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the staff recommendations with the aforementioned adjustments.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's a 4-0 on all your recommendations with the adjustments. And then on that note, the final item, can I get a motion? Oops. So let's go ahead, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this public hearing concludes at 1:14. Thank you.
Okay. All right.